Fear of dying all the time because there collapses constantly.
Yeah.
So they're just, and they say they could dig for ten years and not find a darned stone. It's common. Dig forever. Or you could become a millionaire. So they're just like inherently crazy.
Now, how many, how many people are there digging?
Maybe three hundred.
Digging? Three hundred holes?
Mm-hmm. Oh, more than that. Maybe, probably a thousand holes in the area of a hundred acres. It has got to be ten, a hundred, at least ten to a hundred holes per acre, depending on the area. Some places are more dense.
Yeah.
They just go everywhere. You have to watch your step.
Well, when they, hopefully get the dirt that they're digging to the surface with a bucket.
Carried up in buckets.
With a whole person at a hole in it. There's somebody down there digging, somebody up.
Yeah, they, they dig out a bunch of buckets and they bring it up. It's like sandy material, like gritstone. And they take it and they sort through it. Just a bunch of rocks that big. They fan through it looking for the cans and nothing. And you see there are some of these people's lots are built up.
He's down there. He's got everything running. So we've got audio and video and transmitted, so we're just.
We don't have the main.
I'm watching.
I'm sort of waiting for our fifth board member to show up. He said he was going to be showing up earlier, but.
Give him five minutes. Maybe he had to work.
A couple of minutes he doesn't show up, we'll have to proceed without him. Anything else you can do?
They collapse.
Oh, you call him? You can call him?
All the time. And people die all the time.
They leave right there, I guess.
I got it in my office.
There were people dead around the. There's no law there. There's no patrol. There's nothing. People get murdered daily. Out of three hundred people, somebody dies every day. That's high risk. And they have, um, special time guy walking around. It's bad, but it.
Okay, what we'll do, we're gonna get some procedural things. We gotta get out of the way before we start. Dan's going to see if he can get Dana to show up. Uh, I guess you guys, I'll get a copy of zoning board of adjustments, two thousand and six.
No, I don't have the two thousand.
Yeah, but I didn't bring it with me.
You got them? You did get it? You never got it?
I got the two thousand and six.
The two thousand and five one. I guess there's things that have come up.
She sent it to all of us.
That, uh.
I got that.
That they've, uh. State Office of Energy and Planning has put out that sort of says that we shouldn't. We should be, uh, some of our procedures haven't been what they've been recommending. I guess one of them is, uh, when we had votes in the past, and if the vote was too far and three against, we said the motion failed and we went to the next one. According to this, I don't know, if you look on page thirty-seven, in other words, if a motion to grant a variance fails by a two, in favor of three opposed margin, that does not mean that the variance is disapproved. In this case, one of the three members who disapproved the motion should now propose their own motion to disapprove the application stated reason for denial. In other words, you have to have three affirmative votes in order for the motion to carry. And as you can't have, you can't vote a motion. If you have one in favor and four against to approve something, that doesn't kill it. You have to then make a motion to disapprove it. And then hopefully it would be four to disapprove and one to approve, which that would then carry. So in the past, we haven't been doing that. We've been just saying, okay, the motion failed, so therefore we, uh, acted on that. So now all motions have to, uh, be approved by, whatever the motion is, has to be approved by at least three affirmative votes.
Now, with that said, what if there's only four people on the board and two vote yes, two vote no?
Ben, their recommendation is that if there's, uh.
I didn't even know.
If there's two and you can't get them on, then the meeting should be continued until a fifth member is present. That's what they're saying here. Alternate motion cannot put forward for three members to agree on, the meeting should be continued until a fifth member can be present. If, and that's again, if the applicant chooses to go ahead with four members, but if you can't get a three, uh, majority, you've got to, uh. Okay, the other thing, procedural thing, we're going to start, uh, in this, this, uh. Where the hell is Jesus Christ?
The resolutions of the conflict is the function of the ZBAN.
Okay, and, and the new regulations, Jesus, I just had it here. We have to, on each of these motions now, as is in our forms here, we have to, one, find a, a finding of facts. And then we have to, uh, make a motion on the finding of fact, the reasons for the finding of fact, I guess. God, can I get a fucking?
I'm supporting that denial.
Did you get a copy of that?
Is all of Dana?
Was that a week ago?
If he's on his way, he should be here within, uh, five minutes anyway.
Change my whole rules.
I had to read, I started to read it and I didn't get past page four.
Okay, on procedures, as they say here, any situation brought before the zoning board adjustment goes through six steps. The application, the notification, the public hearing, and then we have a finding of facts. That's our first step. Then a, a reasons for the facts, and then the decision. So what we'll do tonight is that on each, each of these items for variance, we're gonna have to find a, a statement of facts, what, as we see them. Then the reasons for that, and then we'll have a, a vote on the motion. That's the new procedures. It'll take us a little longer tonight probably, but if we do get to it.
I think one of these, Mr. Chairman, was on everybody's book.
They got two of them. They got two.
You do.
They should have one for each variant, don't you?
And there are two here. No, you can have me. These are on Mr. Glennon's table. Now, this one isn't, isn't, it isn't the same as that one, but I think it will ask for the same information.
She includes those right in, those sheets right in with the packet.
We're gonna go through this, and as in, I guess the suggestion was that each member would fill out their own form, and the chair would fill out the finding of fact that the board has agreed on in their vote.
So these are the old ones. Let's get rid of these.
I don't know. Are they the old ones?
I think that it is, to tell you the truth, because this was in the, uh, this is the same as in the book from last meeting.
The first one is the contrary to public interest. Second one is the hardship.
Yeah, unnecessary hardship. Then it's a simplex.
See, the way we've been doing it, we've been using the.
See, this is the old one we had right here.
Yeah.
Which is, and that one is the old one there. And it's just a sheer hardship of public interest, simplex.
That's the same.
Right, this is the old one. That's the new one right here.
Okay, with, how does that comply with the one that was given to the applicant? Are they in the same order?
The applicant's in the same order. There's, uh, public interest, unnecessary hardship, simplex analysis.
And see, and unless the hardship is fourth on.
The new one.
The act that's been given out to the applicant. So we go by what the, uh, was unnecessary hardship.
This is on, uh, this is the first page. This is the second page.
All right, well, we'll go by what they put in here.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Chairman. I made copies for the board of using both the use variance proceeding as well as the area variance.
Well, the fault, use will be the first one.
Yep.
And the area will be the second.
So just for understanding, I copied that. I copied a case law of hardship. And also made a copy of the equitable waiver requirements.
Okay.
Where's Dana coming?
Twenty minutes is.
This is, uh, the CD will be using both the simplex elements for, uh, various, for hardship, and also the area variance for hardship under the Loki elements. So there's a definition and guidelines for both of those two. The first we're gonna deal with is the simplex elements, then we'll move over to the Loki elements. And this is a, uh.
Tressa, bring the meeting to order. At seven twenty. Okay, um. And you see, we've been having trouble getting a full five-member board and, uh, realize that the applicant has the choice, if there's not a full five-member board, to ask for continuance if he wishes, because it takes three affirmative votes to grant any variance, there's any conditions of variance. So it's tougher to get three out of four than three out of five votes. So it's up to the applicant to see whether they want to continue to another meeting to see if we can get five members. We only have five members on the board. We have no alternates. Town council has not found any alternates to serve on this board, so we have no alternates. And if any one member cannot make it, we, we just have no alternates to put in his place.
We, uh, we would, on behalf of the applicants, we'd like to say, my name is Paul McEckern. I'll be speaking for the applicants tonight. In fact, if, uh, Mr. Glennon was here, I would move that he recuse himself on this first one, uh, because we believe he's spoken publicly on January fourth, that might prejudice his ability to sit, but, uh, so we, we would, we're perfectly happy with Paul.
Okay, so you wave the.
And if he comes in, he can certainly sit on the second one.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've have a, just got the new board of adjustment handbook for State of New Hampshire that, uh, shows that some of our procedures have, we haven't been quite following what they've been requiring in the past. So, uh, we're gonna go like we have in the past, each of the five items for a variance. We'll go over individually. First, the applicant will state their case. We'll then open a public hearing. We close the public hearing. The board will ask the applicant and we'll make a decision on each one individually. Once all, all of the items have been addressed, a motion to either grant the variance or deny it will then be made. And that's the way we'll be proceeding. Okay? All right, the, let me read the, uh. Okay, the first item of business is Laura and Stephen Long, continuation of public hearing for variance reference, section seven oh one B four for the new market zoning ordinance. The applicant requests a variance to permit an automobile towing service to be conducted off premises with the parking of one flatbed recovery truck in the driveway of the residence, where parking of vehicles weighing more than one and a half tons is not permitted, section seven oh one B four. The property is located at two thirty-four South Main Street, tax map U four, lot seventy-two, in the R one zone.
R two.
Okay, the first item that we, uh.
R two zone. You said R one.
R two zone.
R two zone.
Sorry, correct, R two zone.
If I could comment to this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In your, uh, black books this evening, you'll find a, uh, letter from the Highway Public Safety Committee. If we could, if you go to that page and review it, please. Dated February twenty-seventh, two thousand and six.
Uh, da-da-da. Well, I, I guess the question is, right now, we're going on to the, uh, five items for variance. I think that'd be more appropriate, once we get the five items done, then we can, uh, before we make a decision on whether to grant the branch or not, we would discuss it at that time before the motion to grant or not grant the variance is heard.
That's fine.
Because I, I don't think this letter pertains to any particular item in the, uh, variance.
Well, if I could go, if I could accept that, Mr. Chairman, if I could go to another issue, uh, from case law.
Yeah.
In the case of Ryan versus the City of Manchester. The case law in that review concluded that a person is responsible for knowing the restrictions and ordinance places on the property. Hardships cannot be based on actions taken or not taken due to the lack of knowledge of those restrictions. In the case of, uh, the presentation here this evening, uh, prior to Mr. Long purchasing the towing business from Riverdale Auto, he was working with Riverdale Auto and parking the tow truck on his property at South Main Street. He was informed at that time it was a violation of the ordinance. It was not an approved, uh, home-based business. And there's certainly the parking of a one and a half ton vehicle was not permitted under the home-based business ordinance. And a requirement for variance was requested at that time that he meet with the board for that application. That did not occur. It was, uh, probably six months ago. After that notification of that situation, Mr. Long purchased the towing business from Riverdale Auto and continued to park his vehicle there until numerous conversations with Mr. Long. He finally moved the truck to another location off of his property. So Mr. Long had prior knowledge that the business was not permitted there and the tow truck was not permitted there. And in the case of Ryan versus Manchester, explicitly produced the result that hardships cannot be based on actions taken or not taken due to the lack of knowledge of those restrictions. So what I'm telling you is that Mr. Long had knowledge prior to buying the business. He had knowledge after the business was purchased that it was a violation of the zoning ordinance to park a truck there.
That, that still doesn't prevent him from requesting a variance.
Oh, certainly not. Just, just saying that he had knowledge of the situation prior to the purchase and after the purchase.
Is that Ryan, R-Y-A-N? I mean, R-Y-A-N.
Yes, R-Y-A-N versus the City of Manchester.
Okay. Okay, we go to the variance. It was given to the board. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The zoning ordinance allows a home-based business in each residential unit. The business involved is a towing service. By definition, is conducted off-site. The ramp truck uses greater than one and a half ton capacity and would be parked at the premises when not in use. The service provided is a valuable service to the community. You want to?
Thank you.
Tap break on that, please.
Is it okay if I stand behind this podium?
Yes, please. I want to do that, and I don't know whether the microphone is working or not.
Bring light on? Yep. Where do you see it?
Turn on this side.
Test, test. Use your fingers, see if it makes any noise. It's probably not an amplification.
There's a feature down to the recorder.
Oh, just going to the recorder, okay. I can, I can move up.
You're bugging the guy downstairs, so.
Comfort isn't, uh, if I was comfortable, I'd be home. The, uh, I guess after we get through the third part, we should go downstairs and check and make sure whether the recording, we usually have a secretary here, but she's not here tonight, so, uh.
Well, I, I have a green light, so I'll, I'll take my.
I don't know what that means. It's probably better than red.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul McEckern. I'm a lawyer in practice in Portsmouth. And I'm here to present the case for the applicants, seeking a variance from section seven point oh one B four of the ordinance, which does not allow the parking of a commercial vehicle of, uh, one and a half ton capacity or greater. And I think we should all be clear on, uh, that. It's not whether the truck itself weighs one and a half ton, because most Ford pickups probably weigh more than one and a half ton. It's the capacity of the truck. And in this case, when the, when the truck is parked, it, uh, it's never going to have a vehicle on it, and that can be made a condition of any variance, so that it's got zero capacity when it's parked. Uh, the, uh, the applicants, uh, have been approved for a home-based business, which is a authorized use in the, in the district, R two. They have no employees. Uh, there's no business done there except on the telephone. Nobody comes or goes. The only outside indisher of the business is that the, the vehicle itself will be parked there at night and when not in use, and it will be on, on the premises itself, uh, heading out into the street. He will back in to the premises. And I'll, I'll cover those five criteria before I'm through. But I'd like to just give, give some broad outline to it. And, uh, and I've got some pictures that, uh, that I'd like to present to the board. And I've numbered them in back, and the applicants have put notations on some of them. But the, the first picture is a, a picture facing town, showing, uh, the outside of the, uh, the driveway as it approaches the street. And, and the tow truck was parked there for purposes of the picture to show you how it would, would appear. It's not the first truck, but it's behind, and there are some other pictures which show it a little better. Picture number two is again, uh, looking in towards town, showing the two trucks parked in the driveway. One is a, uh, not the tow truck. It's a, I guess, a pickup truck. Picture number three is a picture taken, uh, looking out of town, showing the same driveway with the pictures. Picture number four is again a picture looking out of town from the applicant's driveway, showing the fence that, uh, abuts their property along the street. Picture number five is a picture of the premises just to the left of the applicants as you look at it, from the roadway, showing, uh, the, the neighbor's property and, and, and the trees that are there. Picture number six is again a picture looking in towards town. Again, picture number seven looks into town. Picture number eight looks out of town. Some of these are repetitive, but it gives you, if you look at more than one picture of the same scene, you can, you can get a better idea of what we're talking about. And, uh, picture number nine shows a, a truck which probably has a capacity of greater than one and a half tons parked in Maple Crest. And picture number ten is a, is a truck similarly having a capacity of greater than one and a half ton picked in, parked in Riverbend. Those, uh, those pictures fairly, uh, show that, of what is being asked. What is being asked is that the, the tow truck, when it's, when it's not being employed away from the premises, can be parked there in the driveway. And, uh, we will submit that it's not contrary to the public interest, that the parking of the tow truck will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And under your zoning ordinance, R two is described under purpose. The purpose of this district is to provide for an area of transition between the low-density R one residential district and the more intensely developed districts in and around the village area. It is intended that high-quality neighborhoods with a greater density and greater mix of uses than would be permitted in R one residential district shall be accommodated. And if you, if you want to look at all the home businesses that, that you can look at, there's nothing more passive than just parking a vehicle in the driveway of a yard. True, it has a capacity of far greater than one and a half tons. But as I indicated in our written application, it's probably no bigger than a, a bread truck that, that might not have that capacity. It's a two-axle vehicle. Uh, has two wheels on each side of the back axle, but it's just a two-axle vehicle, just like a Ford three fifty. Same, same configuration. The, uh, talking about the, the hardship requirement.
I think what we do is we could take them one at a time.
Okay.
And then that way they. And then that way there, it allows us to, to know so on each of the items and that way there.
Sure.
So, well, on, on the first one.
Okay.
So, we would say it's a, it's not contrary to the public interest, that the zoning ordinance itself is intended to accommodate this kind of a use. The home-based business is in a, is an allowed use without a variance. The size of the truck is, is the, is what's in question, and it's relatively passive, it's just parked there, it drives out into the street, doesn't back into the street. The, the speed limit on that street at that point is thirty miles an hour, so guys shouldn't be zipping up and down. And, and it's not going to have a lot of trips. It's a, it's going to go out in the morning, hopefully, and do its business and come back at night, but sometimes it does have to go out after dark if there's an accident. And I think it's important that it be able to perform this service. Otherwise, he can still operate the business, but he has to get in his car and drive some distance to where it can be legally parked, get in the truck and, and then go there. And, and on a regular basis, that's, that means another vehicle is involved, and it's not a big business, it's just one person. So that's what we have to say on that. Thank you. We now open a public hearing to have comments from the public on whether this variance will not be contrary to the public interest. I, I guess in, in the latest court case clarified that, on contrary to public interest, the court clarified that it should not be read to imply that an applicant must meet any burden higher than required by statute. That is, they must be a demonstrated public benefit if the variance were to be granted. But the applicant merely must show that there will be no harm, will, that is, will not be contrary to public interest. Prior to the simplex ordinance, you had to show that there was a gain to the public interest. After the simplex statute, it was, in other words, if there's no gain nor loss prior to simplex, this item was not met. Since simplex, which is a Supreme Court case, you only have to show not that the public will benefit, you just have to show that the public will not be harmed by it. That was a, a change in the Supreme Court ruling that we've been... A public hearing, who wants to speak on it?
Hey, I'll sit down.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Gail Wyszewski, live at two thirty-six South Main Street. I also have some pictures that I'd like to pass out, if that's permissible.
Sure. Please.
I actually have the pictures, but I photocopied them so that you each could have an individual copy.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to let Mrs. Long know that the trees were trimmed this evening at six o'clock, so they're, they're quite easily to see the road coming from, into town. I'm concerned if you look at the pictures, our safety, as you look at those pictures, you notice that there are vans and trucks. They're very popular people, they have a lot of company, and they have a fairly large family. And as you look through those pictures, one shows their standard driveway, others show vehicles stuck out so that when we come out of our driveway, we cannot see the traffic coming from town towards the high school and towards our property. So we literally have to pull out. Frequently, as you saw pictures where I have no clue where you got those pictures, but the last hearing, you have pictures of the truck with cars on it, you have three pictures of different vehicles of that wrecker or towing truck parked in front along that fence. That wasn't a one, two, or three occasion, since he's had the business, he's been doing that frequently, not since our last meeting a month ago. So just with their normal parking of cars, they have three, you can see that there seems to always be a car sticking out into, close to the edge of the road where you can't see oncoming traffic. We're just very concerned, one, it is residential, two, it's very dangerous. The people in two thirty-six A couldn't be here tonight, but Kevin spoke to me yesterday and said that he has a real concern that his wife or children or his parents will get hit by an oncoming car, and that they'll be at fault because they're cutting out into traffic. And the noise from the truck backing up, summertime, windows are open, you hear that beep, 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 you hear the radio going for calls, et cetera. So we're asking that you keep in mind safety and that it is still a residential area. Thank you.
Have any other in the public yet?
Mr. Chairman. My name's Steve Long, and I'm the owner of two thirty-four South Main Street. The picture she has here is the white van, that would be my plumber coming to the house and checking something at the house. And the van that's there, that's the rental van that my wife's got while our vehicle's in the repair shop. And the other truck that's there, there's a Jeep that's gone. It used to be ours, it was parked over to her grandmother's house, and I put it there so the, so it could leave. And that truck's always been there, that's my service truck, that's my Ford pickup. And there's another shot of our van, that's our van. My wife parked like that to get something out of the, the van, and I had moved it back in there because she had company over there, but it shouldn't have been parked like that. And it wasn't there for six hours. This part that you see in the front of the fence is my son visiting. He lives in Sanford. Okay?
Yeah.
And that truck usually isn't here anymore. There used to be in the park in the yard back from the gravel.
Which truck?
This, this truck right here, which would be my S ten with the cap on it. My son's been down for the past couple days helping me around the house get it done. But that's what these pictures are all, they were just recently taken last week.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You have any other comments in the public? Yes.
Two thirty-six South Main Street, I come in our residence tonight, and the trees, the pictures that we took are from this evening, and the trees are not trimmed.
They were trimmed at six o'clock this evening.
Okay.
And just, Gail Wyszewski, two thirty-six South Main Street, you can go up and see the pile of them right on the lawn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny Griswold, two twenty-six South Main Street. I have the duplex down in back of this house, as you know, and it's my tenants that are worried about getting hit. Where this is parked, that's where many, many times in the last year and a half, that flatbed truck has been parked. And when it snows and the snow is piled up, you cannot see unless you get out across the line in the middle of the road, and it is a safety hazard.
Thank you. Any other comments in the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Yes, I haven't been afforded the opportunity to speak to the other...
Okay.
...elements of the zoning ordinance, and I would like to be able to...
On, on this particular section of the variance?
On this one, yes.
Thank you.
On hardship, I haven't...
Oh, we haven't gotten to hardship yet.
Well, you're closing the public, oh, you're closing the public hearing on that?
That...
Okay, I, I misunderstood.
Yeah, we're going to go over each of these sections one at a time, we're going to have a public hearing on each of the sections one at a time.
I apologize.
Okay. It is confusing.
That's how they do it in the big city.
Okay. All right, it's up to the board now, the, do you have any questions to ask as to whether we're just on the, whether granting the variance will not be contrary to the public interest? I guess, yes.
Just have a procedural question, if, the letter from one of the officials.
Yes.
What is, if they're not in the butter, but they're an official, you can, that would be considered...
You don't have to be in the butter to be...
To be present in the public, okay.
No, anyone that can make comments on it and...
Just take it.
Whether they're in butter or not, it's, basically, there is some more consideration to give to a butter because they know more about the situation, but anyone who could be affected or may be affected, so the public hearing is for anybody in the public, basically.
Yeah.
So basically, what, on what we do, this is, there are a lot of things that are brought up here, but they could, if the board so wished, make conditions so that these wouldn't occur. For instance, I know we've had testimony, the truck has been parked along the highway in a pass and everything, but that, those, all those items can be addressed as conditions if the board so wished. So, and even the amount of vehicles in the driveway or whatever could, could be part of the granting of a variance if the board so wished, so.
Why has that, if the vehicle was a problem like that, would there, would it not have been towed? It's kind of, you know what I mean? I mean, the things...
Well, I, I...
The public...
I guess there's no statute that, I guess if it was interfering with the local law, and yes, it would have been towed.
Yeah.
But just the, if this isn't allowed parking, then the police should have ticketed it.
Yeah.
Basically, if they didn't ticket, I mean, I...
It's more like a, okay, just wondered.
Okay. Well, there's no, there's no, no parking signs on that side of the road, I don't believe.
Parking is allowed on one fifty-two on either side? I, I don't know.
I don't know.
It was a problem at one time because the vehicle was parking contrary to the proper direction of the parking. And so on his side, he should be facing opposite to the downtown area. On occasion, he was parked facing downtown, parallel to the fence.
But there is no, no parking signs along there?
Uh, there was not.
Okay.
It just seems like somebody has to cross, it's thirty miles per hour there?
Except when school's in session, it's twenty, yeah.
Twenty.
Yeah. Okay.
Board members have any questions of the applicant or whatever?
Why do you park it in the street?
Um, when I worked for Riverdale, I was there and I parked over the side of the road. Division six takes care of Route one fifty-two from, I guess from April Crest, always on the lead. And I had to ask if I could park it in front of my fence as long as it was over the yellow or white line. They told me they didn't have a problem, but I asked if it was going to be towed or anything. He says, no, we don't have a problem, but if it's parked on the line, then it's just, it would be a problem to them. But he told me that as long as I'm over the white line and I'm ramping against the fence like I am, there shouldn't be a problem.
Division six is a division of the highway department?
Yes, it's, it's a highway...
Not state highway.
State highway, it takes care of the road. I mean, um...
Do you still park it out front?
No, I back it in my yard. I mean, I did take consideration of, of it being there. It got hit by one of the town trucks, he had a new driver, he had the wing on the, on the state, on the truck, the town truck, it was a little over too far, but I was over the white line, but the, the wing was also over and it cleaned off the side of my mirror. And ever since that, Bill, when Bill owned Riverdale, I voted, had to give the town a huge bill for me, for the town, for the mayor. I mean, I put the mirror on it, I bought the mirror out of my own pocket. I don't know why Bill gave you guys a big bill for labor and the mirror when he shouldn't have. And ever since then, this is what's, I've been going through.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, have any other questions and discussions or...
It seems we're talking about safety, should we discuss the safety meeting?
Absolutely.
The, uh, a letter was mailed to you, Mr. Chairman, from the Highway Public Safety Committee, which is enclosed in the night's paperwork.
Does anybody have a copy of that?
By Wilford Hammon.
February twenty-seventh letter from...
Highway Safety, Highway Public Safety Committee.
I'll read the letter for the record. Leo Fillion, zoning board appeals chair. Mr. Fillion, the Highway and Public Safety Committee at its meeting on February twenty-first requested a forwarded letter on their behalf to you as chair of ZBA in reference to the large ramp truck, which is often parked on the roadside of, on Route one fifty-two. The board understands that you will be conducting a hearing on the request for a home-based business at this property. They'd like this letter to be matter of record at this hearing, and want to encourage ZBA to adhere to a strict interpretation of the town's home occupation and home-based business, specifically seven oh one B four. This Highway and Public Safety has received several complaints regarding safety concerns, specifically in reference to the large ramp truck. Another concern expressed was the desire to maintain the integrity of our residential neighborhood. Therefore, the Highway Public Safety Committee urges the ZBA to take into consideration what would feed our valid concerns of new market reticence and enforce the above referenced ordinance in a manner that strictly interprets the intent of our zoning ordinance. Sincerely, Wilford Hammon, Highway, Highway Public Safety Committee acting chair. I, I guess this goes back a way, when February, when they were parking the truck alongside one fifty-two, which, that concern could be alleviated if the...
Now, how are you going to keep him from parking out front if this, if, if he's on the other side of the white line?
You mean alongside one fifty-two?
Yeah.
What happens, you caught it if the board wished, make that a condition of the variance, is not allow any parking alongside one fifty-two out of, out of their driveway, and you could even restrict how many vehicles would be allowed in the driveway as a condition, if the board wished.
So they have four vehicles in the driveway, and they got two or three people coming to visit, are they going to have to park over in the school parking lot?
Whatever. I guess that's, if the board so wished, they could make that a condition of, if they can have the truck there, they're going to have X number of vehicles if they want, that's up to you.
Isn't the problem just a tow truck? Isn't the problem just a tow truck?
No, the problem isn't just a tow truck, the problem is they require an variance to allow it to be there.
Right.
Period. I guess the amount of vehicles in the driveway is...
I mean, it looks like the other truck is the same size, some of these pictures, there is a big, maybe the tow truck's longer, but Christ, like, height, width?
Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, we're not, we're...
The ramp truck is about eighteen feet long, I would say the bed of the ramp truck is eighteen or twenty feet long.
The nose of it and the girth of it's probably the same size as their...
I imagine it's bigger, it's got a larger tire and wheel on it than a four-wheel-drive pickup truck.
Yeah.
Does anyone, you don't see it, do you?
Yeah, I don't see it.
Richard wasn't here last time, does anyone have those pictures that were here last time that showed the...
I've, I know that property, because I...
No, I, it showed the truck, the width and length of the truck, better, better than these pictures show.
I, um, you know, I think I, I know the, I used to go over Riverdale, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
It's the same.
Okay.
The, the point is that the truck is greater than one and a half ton capacity.
I think my car's been on that truck.
The ordinance says you cannot have a vehicle parked on your property if it's one and a half ton or greater.
Okay.
So that's what the request for the variance is.
That's why I knew the variance, right, okay.
Okay.
Well, if we grant this, are we setting a precedent for everybody? Well, if we grant this, are we setting a precedent for everybody else in town?
I, basically, we're not supposedly each, the statutes state that each property will be-
On its own merits.
On its own merits, basically. It's not one or another, so.
Now, but if somebody comes before you, they'll say, you did this the last time. How about now?
That's exactly what the problem is.
Well, no, I don't, I don't agree. That's not where the statute goes. The statute says each-
Each and individual property.
Each property has different circumstances.
Correct.
And so, each property has to be decided on its own basis. Makes sense. Okay, so, now, the, the way this is going to go now is we first have got to find a statement of fact, whatever somebody wants to do, and then a conclusion from that statement of fact, and then we're going to vote on it.
That's on contrary to the public interest.
This is just basically, yeah. In other words, a statement of fact might be that we find that whatever will be contrary to the public interest, therefore, uh, what the hell's the book here? The conclusion is whatever, then there'll be a motion.
So, is that open?
If you, if you people are all through discussing this item, then we, someone has got to make a conclusion on, or have to come up with a statement of the facts that they found, which has to be addressed to whether this will or will not be contrary to the public interest.
A statement of fact that, according to testimony of the public, there were incidences where it could be considered a, it could be considered contrary to public interest, and then the applicant contested that he is now parking the truck on, in the driveway, where that would eliminate the, the conflict with the public of interest. So, I would like to make a motion.
That's-
Hold on.
It'll go.
What we do, we're going to, not, now, we're going to, we're going to find a finding of fact versus a statement that whatever, that it sounds like you're, something's going to go to the fact that, uh, conditions will be, conditions will be added to the variance so that these, uh, items that were not in the public interest will be addressed to. That could be something, or, or whatever. I know it's going to, it's going to be complicated the first couple of times we go through this, but I think once you get the system down, it would, uh-
So, where did I flaw? Is it?
Well, I think your comment only took into consideration that the vehicle's now being parked in the driveway so that it relieved the parallel parking along the fences being the problem.
Mm-hmm.
But in fact, the truck is still not, at this time, permitted to be parked in the driveway, so that resolve is not at issue here.
Okay.
The request that the applicant has here is for permission to park the one and a half ton vehicle on his property.
Right. Right. And, and we have to find that if he parks it where we might say, you must park it here, whether that would still be in the public interest. I, I think that we've got to separate what has happened in the past, what will be alleviated, then we have to say whether the variance will be in the public interest once these conditions are-
You know, is it, if he's parking in the road, is that even under our jurisdiction? It's not his land.
I, I think that, that, the fact that the testimony in the past and whatnot said that one time he did park in the road, he's agreed that he will not do that anymore. We can make that as a condition of variance that if you do park in the road, we're going to take away our variance, basically.
Yeah.
Something to that effect. That's, I guess, the, in other words, once you put conditions on a granting of variance, if these conditions are not upheld, then basically you lose the variance.
This is a difficult case.
Sure.
Because the public interest goes forward even a little bit further than that, because what if, the, what if you allow the vehicle to be parked in the driveway? Are you allowing the car, the car, the truck to be parked in the driveway with a customer's vehicle on the tow truck?
That-
And now, are we talking about public interest?
That, that's up-
The issue of, the issue of the master plan is in building neighborhoods, and your new 2006 manual and guidelines are saying that you have to pay more attention to the master plan than not. The intent of the master plan is to build a neighborhood, and you have to look at this as being, is this part of a normal neighborhood? Is this, does this show any other deficiency in the property than the neighbor does? Those are the issues that you have to look at, not whether or not it's a, it's a personal use, which it should not be considered a personal, personal use. If you go through the hardship case, the special interest case, the public interest case, so this is, this is a difficult case to look at.
Hmm.
And I really think you have to consider the master plan and the building of neighborhoods here.
I, I can agree with you right there. We, as a zoning board of adjustment, are dedicated to-
The zoning ordinance.
The zoning ordinance.
Exactly.
And if, if the zoning ordinance does not comply with the master plan, we have to act for the zoning ordinance, not the master plan. And that is found in a lot of cases where you have a master plan and they adopt a zoning ordinance that does, is really not in compliance with it. Then what do you do? Do you, do you uphold the, the master plan or you uphold the zoning ordinance?
No.
And I think case law definitely says that we have to interpret the zoning ordinance, not interpret the master plan.
Oh, no. I'm not talking about interpreting the master plan.
Oh.
What the, we don't want to read Field and Stream Magazine before we come here to make a decision on an application. What we should be reading is the master plan. That's what puts us in line with the thinking of why the ma, why the master plan allowed a zoning ordinance to be developed. The zoning ordinance is only developed because there was a master plan there. If there was no master plan, there would be no zoning ordinance. And I think you'll see in your document, there was indicated that you just picked up for the 2006. It'll tell you that more so than ever now, you have to look at the master plan in making these decisions because it gives you an avenue of thinking. It gives you, why did this happen? Was it aesthetic purposes? Was it building of the neighborhood? Was it injurious to public health? It goes on to describe all of those issues, and to read that document, I was going to be grateful to solving these because this is a tough one. This is a tough decision. And when you get to the hardship aspect of this, it's even going to be more difficult.
When we get to the hardship one, we'll get to it. Where we're going, we may never get to it. Okay.
I'd like to make a statement of fact, but what, I guess I'm confused as to what the content should reflect.
The content should be a statement of fact as to whether or not this, uh, fact, where the heck am I? Whether this will be, or not be in the public interest. And again, is the public going to gain by this or is it going to lose by this application? Is there, is there a gain to the public by having this application or is there a loss to the public by having this here? The gain possibly is having another business in town, whatever. The loss, if you feel is safety, a loss, or if you think there's a neighborhood loss, or if you think-
Sure.
I guess that's, well, I interpret it. Now, it's up to the board to make that determination.
Well, you gonna do it?
I don't know what to say.
I would think my statement of fact would be if the vehicle, tow truck, is parked within the bounds of his property, it would not be contrary to the public interest. That's my statement of fact. If all vehicles, see what, I mean, how can you control, the guy has all his, his four vehicles in the driveway of his residence. I, I can't see how that would be contrary to the public interest.
I, I guess, by, thi, this is no different to me than a site plan review where you approve a site plan and say, okay, the most vehicles you can have in this thing, four vehicles or three or five or whatever. And I, I think these are tight conditions that can be put on the approval or something like this if the board so wished. And if they, I mean, i- it's different than a private residence where, I mean, they're having a party and they have eight vehicles or 10 vehicles. We have, we don't have control over that. But by this type of sort of semi-business application, we, it brings it under the jurisdiction.
What's the weight of that truck? Or the, with relevance to the 1.5 ton? What are we dealing with?
Is, is there a-
It's greater than 1.5 tons? What is, how much greater?
Truck empty weighs 13.
No, the, the classification, half-ton pickup, three-quarter ton pickup, one-ton.
Oh, God, it weighs over, over one ton.
No, no, I'm talking about, isn't there a-
The payload.
350 or 500.
Oh, 22, 22, 4, 4, 4.
GVW.
22, 5.
GVW.
Yeah, GVW, that's the gross vehicle weight that what it can carry. Empty, though, is, is 13, 5, empty.
So, it's, we're talking the difference between 1.5 tons and 11 tons.
What model is it?
It's, it's an International 4600.
4600, yeah.
Yeah, it's a low pro type.
That's a two, that's a two and a half ton, I believe.
It's, it's a low pro, it's sitting in the driveway.
Yeah, I think that's a two and a half ton.
Yeah.
Okay. So, basically, it does fall under the ordinance prohibitive, prohibits it. So, I'm finding it's either, if we grant a variance, then we're saying, okay, you can have more than one and a half ton. You're going to have, if we grant this, we can have a two and a half ton if that's what this vehicle is. That's what the variance is.
Well, is it the payload we're talking about or the weight of the vehicle?
I, I think, when you talk it, the way the ordinance is written is the way the normal classification of trucks, half-ton pickup, three-quarter ton pickup, one-ton pickup, whatever. And I think that-
Because with reference to payload.
No, I, that has nothing to do with payload any more than a half-ton pickup has anything to do with the payload. You, you can get extra shocks, ever.
So, this is a 20, 11 and a half ton pickup?
No, it's a two and a half ton truck.
No, 11, it's 22,000 pounds.
That's the weight it can carry.
That's gross.
Gross weight.
The payload.
And this is two and a half tons weight.
GVW.
Yeah, I think that's a two and a half ton, he's, I believe.
Yeah, it's, it looks like about two and a half ton.
Yeah, I think that's what it is. It's the, the rating.
But, again, all what you're saying there is whether or not they need a variance. If it's over ton, 100 and a half ton, uh, nominal vehicle weight, then it needs variance. It's not allowed. Not, it's got nothing to do with how much it carries or whatever any more than your pickup. You may have a pickup with extra shocks, ever, extra springs and everything that can carry more load, but it's still called a half-ton pickup if it's a-
I, I still, I would repeat, if there, if he's got four registered vehicles, they're parked in his driveway, I can't see how that's contrary to the public interest for this, for number one of this variance.
I'll put together a statement of fact. If that's a statement of fact is that-
My statement of fact that, that the variance will not be contrary to public interest if all vehicles are parked in the bounds of the property on the driveway with a limit of four vehicles. It's, it's not contrary to the public interest off the road. That's my statement of fact.
Any discussion on the statement?
Now, can you park four vehicles on a hot dog driveway or do you have to use that gravel place?
I can park them on the driveway. I mean, technically, my son takes the fourth vehicle to Sanford, and that one, after he gets somewhere, is going to, we're going to sell it. So, basically, alls we got is a Ford Explorer and my pickup in the ramp truck.
How many vehicles do you and your business own?
The, um, the business just owns the ramp truck and the pickup truck.
And you personally, the family?
Yeah, the Ford Explorer, it's a personal vehicle that she has to have with the vehicles.
Yeah. That's, so you have three vehicles?
Yeah.
So, okay.
Room for four.
If you park four vehicles in that driveway, do you go off of your, including your two business trucks, do you go outside of your property bounds? So.
One last comment I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, is that the nature of the zoning ordinance is to preserve the character of the neighborhood, and that's why when you see the table of permitted uses, that all of these situations have been taken into consideration. Now, when you permit something outside of the character of the neighborhood to be imported into that neighborhood, you're taking away from the character of the ordinance, which is taking away from the neighborhood itself. And I think that's where you do not have public acceptances when you do that. You anticipate you're going to live in a neighborhood that doesn't have vehicles like that. You know, and then when you start to introduce that, it's different. It's very different.
I think they have variances for it.
Exactly. When they have a variance for, but it's not a permitted use.
Right. Mr. Chairman, for the record, could I just object to, I know that zoning administrators' report is very valuable, but it's, it's, he's participating in the deliberations, it seems to me, and I just want that on the record.
That, that's something we can-
I think what I presented to the board is case law as well as those issues that have been discussed, not under my-
Now, I guess that's-
Taking of the words, but certainly it's been, it's been published under case law.
What?
And it's the instructions that you'll see are readily available if you read the 2006 guidelines to the zoning board. And I talk about nothing else.
Is that what we just received?
Yes.
About a week ago?
Correct.
I, I guess that's the question, is we haven't really addressed this, and we probably should do it on rules of procedure at some point as to when the board gets in deliberation or they should be just the members of the boards or, or the board and the zoning administrator. I guess that's, and I guess that's what the objection here is, is to whether, and this has come up recently in a couple of other cases, too, which I guess we have to get resolved in our rules of procedure, but we're out at this time, but this we're going to have to watch it.
No.
All right, listen.
Is this actually BOSHA?
What?
Are we working with?
No.
It's, um, simplex for use.
No, we're, yeah, right now, we're not in a, we're not even into-
Simplex, oh, BOSHA.
The hardship that's coming under simplex. We're still on the first phase of the five criteria for, for the granting of variance. We've got four more to go, and when we get into simplex, we've got three cases, we got seven, seven of these things we're going to have to go through. We may have to send off for lunch around midnight.
So, I'd like to make a motion that all vehicles, that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest if all the vehicles are parked in the applicant's driveway and also within the bounds of the applicant's property and also to be limited to four registered vehicles.
Those are conditions.
Four, the three conditions. On the property, on the driveway, four vehicles registered. On the property, on the driveway, four vehicles registered. With the tow truck empty. So five.
Yeah, I guess, let me read this one statement here in this page thirty-five, finding of facts. After the public hearing is closed, the board should deliberate in public and in a manner such that all discussions can be heard by the public on the essential facts that the testimony has established. For example, if a variance had been requested and conflicting evidence has been received about whether the proposed useful diminished property values in the neighborhood, the board should vote to find as a fact that the value is either will or will not be diminished, and why? Because of increased density, noise, congestion, traffic, and what have you. Court has strongly recommended and has required that these specific findings be stated. That help any? I mean, it's still basically saying that we have to agree on some facts, and, and in this case here, we're talking about whether it would be in the public interest, and.
But would it, would it be in the public interest, or would it not be contrary to the public interest if the cars are all parked in the applicant's driveway, within the property bounds, a limit of four vehicles, with the tow truck empty? That's my finding of fact, that it would not be contra, contrary to the public interest with.
Right, and that actually says the statements of why it would be.
So there, I'd like to make a motion that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest with the following conditions. One.
Hold on.
Oh.
If. I keep going.
If, number one, the applicant parks all vehicles on the driveway of the lot. Number two, the applicant is limited to four vehicles to be parked on the driveway. Number three, all vehicles shall be registered. Four, tow trucks shall be empty. Am I, am I saying in a roundabout way that they won't be on the street, or should I make that very clear?
I, I guess you already said that, that there'll be four on the driveway. The all four vehicles will be parked in the driveway.
On, within the bounds of the actual property.
All those in favor of the statement, say if I'm saying your right hand, saying aye.
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 Close. The next one is the simplex hardship criteria. The zoning restriction as applied interferes with the landowner's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting and property and its environment. The allowance of a home-based business will be illusory if it did not allow the parking of a tow truck used in the business. A variance from the strict application of the ordinance would allow the owner to access the tow truck without first traveling to another location. In the case of an accident response, this time saves may be important. This is a reasonable use of the property. We, okay, that's, that's the first criteria of the simplex variance. We, after this one, that's the first hardship criteria. Second one, would be no fair substantial relation exists between the general purpose of zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property, and the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. Okay, we'll take the first one. You wanna make a comment on that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I basically said it in, in writing here. I think that the starting point on this is that the home-based businesses are allowed in, in every residential district, whether it's our two or, or a different residential district. And once you allow a home-based business, it's unfair and unreasonable, and not consistent with the ordinance, to say that, that a tow truck business, which is, which is conducted really off the premises, away from the businesses, is a unreasonable use of the property. It's, it's certainly reasonable that he'd be allowed to park his truck there when it's not in service, a- as we've already explained, that it means that time delay and using yet another vehicle to reach his tow truck. It's a passive use, it's, it's, doesn't make any noise, other than when it's starting up and leaving, or, or coming in, just like any other vehicle. And under the simplex hardship, it would interfere under these circumstances, where you allow a home-based business with the reasonable use of that property, because this is part of that home-based business. Do you want me to address the other two aspects of?
We're gonna fight through this one one session at a time.
I think when you get, when you get a little more under your belt, you probably cover the whole public hearing in one shot.
We've tried that, and it's a disaster.
Oh, you have, okay, okay.
Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on the hardship, whether the zoning restriction as applied interferes with the landowner's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment. Anyone in the public hearing wanna talk to that item? Now, close the public hearing?
He's gonna take.
I'm sorry.
I would just like to ask one question. I'll give you these, I'd like these back. You can show me how you park a flatbed truck and three other vehicles in that yard.
Number one, trying to get away.
It's taking all the time, like.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have those pictures we had last time?
I don't, I'm surprised that they're not in here, that, that didn't get moved along.
Oh, maybe they are. Did any?
Who supplied those pictures? You?
You did.
That was the eight-and-a-half by elevens?
Yeah.
Yes, I don't know what happened to them.
I asked him, he's fully young. Does anybody have those pictures that were?
Either one of the files.
Dan had taken last time?
I, I think, I think I left them all home. Let me look, I don't think I got them. I think I left them all at home.
I think that picture did show there was four vehicles in the, remember the one that showed with the?
Yeah.
Well, if he couldn't fit four, then he's limited to three.
Pardon?
If he can't fit four in the driveway, then he would have three.
Yeah, I, I think they, Dan had some pictures last time, eight-and-a-half by eleven pictures that, that show four vehicles in the driveway with the truck, with the vehicle on the truck.
With the vehicle.
Yeah, that driveway will hold the tow truck and three other vehicles.
Yeah.
There's the paved area of the parking that would be driving right to the garage.
Yeah.
And there's a space next to what they can hold a vehicle, and a space next to that that can, which could hold the tow truck. So you'd have two vehicles, the tow truck and another vehicle.
They did show.
I.
Is there any other comments in the public? I'll close the public hearing. Right, this, this part of the simplex is whether the zoning restriction as applied interferes with the landowner's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment.
Make, make a statement of fact.
Yes. Hold on, let me get my book. All right, go through it once before we write it down, see if there's a. Okay, go ahead.
Zoning restriction as applied interferes with the landowner's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment, for the reasons that state Route 152 is, it's not unusual to see a truck like that driving up and down that road, that route's first to plow, major artery in town, and that the driveway of the house is adequate to park the tow truck.
Can I make a comment to that, Mr. Chairman?
Let's get it down first, before we get to.
Is there something to do with the 152?
Hmm?
Didn't sound right coming out of my mouth. Something wrong with that.
And the use of truck of this size would not.
And also, I forgot to add this as a condition to number one, so I think I should add it as a condition to, to this.
I, I, I think.
Is it the size, the size of the truck?
What we'll do is we'll keep all these conditions, and when we get to the last one, if we get to the last one, we would add all the conditions for the granting of the variance. We'll write them down as we go along, and then if we get to the end.
Compile them all there.
Compile them all there, rather than have them individually.
If it's under a two-and-a-half-ton truck, is that, am I, under the correct understanding that that truck in question is?
I, I think what we, if we're granting this variance, it would be the variance for this truck, period.
Okay. For this specific truck, so I'm.
Which we will have to find number question if we get that far. And, and we are gonna get that far, 'cause whether we only fine for some of the granting of the variances, we have to go through them all in order to, if they then later wish to appeal, they would only be appealing the ones that were not granted, not the entire
We all love that tune, Mr. Lang.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
You're showing your colors.
Green, my name.
Okay, if the statement was the zoning will interfere the reasonable use of, of the property, that is a major artery and a use of truck of this size would not be unreasonable. There were some other words in there that I missed.
Given, given the fact that it's on State Route 152, and that the driveway is adequate
Any discussion? Dan, you have something to say?
Please. In the 2006 Board of Adjustment of New Hampshire handbook that you all have, if you turn to Section three, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the owner seeking it. I, I think what this is telling us is that the hardship has to be of the land. We haven't heard from the presentation to this point what the hardship with the land is. We've heard of how it would be appropriate for the owner to have an opportunity, get in the truck and go, doesn't have to go in one vehicle to another vehicle. But what they're telling us under here for the criteria for hardship, is it has to be with the, the land, and it has to be something uniquely different than all the other pieces of land about it that make the variance go to the land. It, the variance does not go to the individual here, the, the variance goes to the land. And so you have to decide what is the difference of all the air, the land surrounding this lot, which makes it so different, that should, it should entitle the owner of that property to have a tow truck plowed, parked on it when the zoning regulations do not permit it? And I think that's the question you have to answer. Only when some characteristic of the particular land question makes it different from others can unnecessary hardship be claimed. The fact that a variance may be granted in one town does not mean it in the other town, or identical fact that a different decision might be lawfully reached by another. 'Cause when you look at the land around it, if it's like all the other lots, and it's not different than what the law is telling us, that the hardship cannot be ascertained The forgiveness has to go to the land, not the individual asking for it. And we haven't heard a presentation here where the hardship is the land.
Other than he would have to go to a different location to access the truck.
That has nothing to do with it, it's the land, it's the hardship with the land. What makes it different? And some of the cases that you'll read in here, say, they discuss wetlands, and if there's a neighborhood that's full of wetlands, then still the variance shall not be presented, even if the hardship does exist. So the hardship is very difficult to prove.
I think that's a very good point. 'Cause I don't know what to say to that, at all.
Well, additional case law with, again, in the case of Hanson versus Manning, the unnecessary hardship was owing to special conditions. And absent special conditions, which distinguish the property from. And absent special conditions, which distinguish the property from other property in the area, no variance may be granted even though there is a hardship. That was a Supreme Court case.
We've got to look at a lot of variances then. Is there, I mean, what if they have those use variance a while back? And I can't remember saying anything about the unique characteristics of the property. It was something to do with the, whether the truck was a operating business or not and they decided it wasn't operating over on Packers Falls?
Packers Falls?
Two months ago.
The guy that had the woodchipping business?
Yeah.
Oh, that was on Birch Drive.
Birch Drive.
Yep. It just stuck out of my head and...
See, in another case similar to this case is Devaney versus the town of Wyndham, where the board denied a variance because the applicant was familiar with the zoning ordinance prior to. And what happened in that case was the applicant made his own hardship and then came in asking for a variance for it. And this is similar to this case where the applicant knew prior to buying the towing business that it was contrary to the zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Do I protest the fairness of this meeting at this point? I know when I'm getting a fair hearing and having an advocate sit up with the judges arguing the case at the other side of the case is just unfair because of his position. And I, I would just submit that this, this is not a fair hearing. And I, and I know it from, from just, I just know it and, and I want that on the record. And I protest with all due respect to Mr. Vincent, his knowledge, it's having an advocate sitting with you arguing the other side of the case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in response to that, the New Hampshire Municipal Association provides job descriptions for every employee that's under the municipal association. The, to make it short, the responsibility of the zoning administrator is to advise the board through the presentation and application of a process such as this.
Yeah, and I guess the question is then, once you've done that, whether you should be involved in the deliberations after that. That, that's been the question. I think it's been come up a few times. I think the town attorney called up a few months ago here the same thing and I guess...
I can't remember that.
I, I guess that we're going to have to... Does the board want to address this issue now or do you want to just go along with it and then? Go on with the fact and then if the applicant has a... It could be a basis for rehearing, I guess, is the, once we, I think we've got to get this issue resolved with our town attorney or whatever as to at what point does the zoning administrator make his pitch and then?
I can see clearly what he's saying and I understand what you mean by that, but when I read this also, the zoning restriction as applied interferes with the landowner's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment. I guess I can interpret that in a couple of different ways. What, what is the unique setting of the property and its environment? Where is the environment? That's, if you look in the handbook, it spells it out. Right to see that there's a difference in the language between the handbook and what's the question being asked. When I look at the question simply, at the simplex analysis, I maintain my statement, but when I read the handbook, it's, I would have to say I'm wavering. I'd also like to ask the town attorney if that's what, which one to put more weight on? Interpretation of the question or forget about interpreting the question, look at the handbook, what it spells it out very clearly is being...
Page thirteen.
Correct. Thirteen, three. I mean, they described what the hardship...
I guess the, what you could say is, oh, the difference between being on 152 and being inside of...
Maple Crest.
Yeah, Maple Crest or I, I guess that could be a difference.
That's the way I interpreted it.
Yeah.
As part of it.
What is unique about this property, about, there's never, not all the properties are identical. So I guess the, what is the uniqueness of this property that would allow the variance to be granted? Is there a uniqueness to the property? And I guess that...
On the state highway.
The uniqueness is where it's sitting.
Yeah, I, I guess, okay, so then you say, all right, it's are all the properties along 152 in this zone would meet this requirement or are they? The uniqueness might be just being on 152. Now, there's a lot of properties on 152, so you can't find any one that is not on 152, so I guess it's the balancing act, I guess, on all of these things, so.
I guess you could say it's a... It's not on the side with...
Well, I...
Unique is being big enough to park three vehicles or more in it. You can't arrest them drivers.
That could be a uniqueness of the width of the driveway and how many vehicles you can get into it. That could be a uniqueness to it.
Plenty of sight distance because they just trimmed the trees.
Sight distance could be unique to it. I, I don't know.
Speed limit, sight distance, state route. That's just my opinion. If you're on 152 versus a neighborhood, I think it does make a difference because they're both in that same zone. And I can understand that 152 by no means is any type of commercial road at this point. It's got schools on it, it's got, but I just can't see how it, um...
Well, I, I think 152...
Restriction on 152.
Does have businesses on it. It's got the flower shop, it's got the insurance business on it, it's got...
If you can drive a semi loaded down that road, why couldn't you drive a tow truck down that road without? And I guess it's the property in the neighborhood.
I think the reasonableness is, is sort of, is the question is, what is unique? Why would you consider this unique?
In that zone?
The amount of driveway, the location?
I mentioned it's because it's on State Route, Route 152 and the driveway is adequate to park the tow truck. Those are my two.
Why is it unique? Unique other than others?
That's as unique as I could get. That's all.
Other than making up on it.
There's no other, I don't have any other comment.
Still a residential neighborhood.
I do, I...
Master Plan talks about residential neighborhoods.
So you're saying we should never grant a variance for, for our home occupation in, in an I-1, I-2 zone?
Not, not really. The home business is always granted in the, in the, any zone. Home businesses or home occupation is permitted.
You should never grant a variance.
It doesn't, a home business doesn't require a variance. All it has, all it requires is an application. It's the particular type of use that now comes from that application where it says that a ton of a vehicle is not permitted and there's a reason for that. It's a neighborhood. It's where people live. It isn't like there's a truck just driving down the road. Hardship's one of the toughest ones to get through. Because you want to be fair to the applicant and still you've got to be fair to the neighborhood.
I can appreciate that. I just, I see it as being the unique setting that it's on 152 and the driveway is adequate to park it. It's, this is my opinion. I think it's...
Have any other? I'm getting to think what we're getting into. Guys want to continue shooting this, that you want to? Continue it. I think I...
I think we should continue it.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm looking ahead here and there's, now that I've heard the testimony of the public, there's some things in here that I think need more thought than, I'm trying to think as I'm working here. But with the testimony of the public and the, the amount of, I think, I, I could use more time.
Think what?
I could use more time to think. Because there, there's some, there's some coming up here that a lot more difficult to sort through than public interest and the environment. Public interest one I thought was very difficult, but I don't know.
They even go on to say about public interest that...
Just hold on, we're on an item here that we're going to, going to...
Just answering the board member's question.
You mean number three?
The granting of the variance on public interest. At the end of number two, they say that probably wouldn't even be upheld by the court if you refuse public interest. Tough one.
Let me ask you, in, in, in number one, we allowed him to park four vehicles on his lot. Now when...
On the driveway.
On, on the driveway.
I think what we did is we said that it will not be contrary to the public interest with these conditions.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that, that really just answers one.
So now that we get down to simplex one. They've already said he can put the truck in the driveway with conditions.
Well, I, I guess now the question were...
With simplex one? You've already quoted up here on, on the variance will not be contrary to the public interest that he can put the truck in the driveway.
But then it mentions...
Oh, you're contradicting yourself in simplex one?
I guess the simplex A is whether you find any uniqueness to the property in order to be able to grant the hardship. That's sort of different than whether it's in the public interest. You have, we have to find a uniqueness to the property and its environment. I guess we're we're sort of in a quandary of what is unique.
What is unique?
152 being this is that it is a extra large driveway that could handle this tow truck plus adequate parking for the house. Is that what makes it unique from other properties in the area? I guess that's the, is, is that what? Has that satisfied the unique setting of the property?
When I think of 152, I think it's, I think of, you know, it's maintained before Maple Crest would be maintained by a service vehicle if there's a snowstorm, ice storm. It's salted prior to. It's a heavier road. It's wider. It's got shoulders. It's a different road than a lot of other roads. The driveway is adequate to park the tow truck. I thought that was...
Now, if you go on to read item three, it tells you when the hardship so imposed is shared equally by all property owners, no grounds for variance exists. So all the property owners, they're on 152. They all have the same...
But in Maple Crest, within the same zone, they're not on 152.
Right, so it's unique for Maple Crest. Now, what is it, why is it unique from the rest of the properties on 152? How far does the R-2 zone go?
Why do you have to go only on 152 when it's in an entire zone that encompasses?
Oh, because you said 152.
Right. That's the reason, because in that zone, it's R-2. Within R-2, you've got residential neighborhood, you've got one, two.
How far does R-2 go? Can you tell on that map? Goes far to Grant Road?
It's not that, it goes to...
Gravel pit and junket.
No, it doesn't go to Grant Road.
Doesn't even go far to Grant Road?
Riverside, I think it is. Is it the? Not Riverside, uh...
River Bend?
Uh, yeah, no.
River Bend's over the other way.
Just complicating the shit right out of it. More, 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 more.
Well, it gets tougher with the new 2006 guidelines.
Whose guidelines?
Nobody's read them.
Whose, whose guidelines are they?
All right, goes to Moonlight Bridge.
They made them up. Just made them up?
Well, from past court cases.
That zone. I would think there's a difference between 152 and any other road in that entire, that's half the, that's half the town, well, half the...
Then what we need to do is have their lawyer and then have our lawyer here to go over the court case and just like hold the thing out last round.
It's getting tougher with that all the time.
Stupid.
The uniqueness, there were two schools on that road, very close together.
R-2 goes to Moonlight Bridge.
Moonlight Bridge.
So I guess the, the uniqueness would have, if we're going to go, we say it's unique because it's 152, then there's the sixteen properties on 152 in the R-2 zone.
Watch your head. Dangerous.
All right, what do you want to do? You want to?
I want to go eat.
Can we vote on this and then extend? Or extend?
Have any other discussion? And right now we have the zoning interferes reasonable use of the property. What is unique about it is on a major artery and the use of the truck this size would not unreasonably would not be unreasonable. The driveway is adequate to park the tow truck with other vehicles.
Count of twenty-six, hold on. Twenty-six on 152. Twenty-six properties.
In the R-2?
Yep. Twenty-six from here. Let me make the motion that the zoning restriction as applied interferes with the landowner's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment for the reasons that it's on State Route 152. If you look at the zone as a whole, there's only twenty-six out of all properties that are in the R-2 zone that are actually on 152. 152 is a state road versus, which is different than the other roads. I believe, different than most of the roads, if not all of the roads in that zone. And the driveway is adequate to park the tow truck.
Any other discussion? That did. You seem to be studying something.
No, I'm all set.
Oh, is that?
Yeah. Haven't heard you second it yet.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Say it loud enough for the camera.
Any other discussion? All of the favor? Motion, anything for the same, I raise your right hand.
Aye.
The sex hardship, no fair and substantial relation exists between the general purpose of zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. I guess the starting point on this one is, Mr. Chairman, is the general purposes of the zoning ordinance, and there are two sections that are applicable here. Section 7.00 on home occupation and home-based businesses. It says, "The purpose of allowing home occupations and home-based businesses is to enhance economic opportunities for residents without significantly detracting from the quality of the neighborhoods." That's the purpose that we're working with. And certainly, I believe that the purpose of allowing this particular home-based business is consistent with that purpose. And when you go to the purpose of the R2 district, it says, "The purpose of this district shall be to provide for an area of transition between low-density R1 residential districts and the more intensively developed districts in and around the village area." So that although it isn't neighborhood, your own ordinance says it's a transitional neighborhood between the downtown compact and the outlying R1. And so, the purpose of the zoning ordinance itself is to foster this sort of economic opportunity for residents. And, you know, it goes without saying that the backbone of this country is small businesses, and this is a small business. And I believe that consistent with the simplex hardship variance, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on this property. The general purpose of the ordinance is to allow this use. The specific restriction of arbitrarily limiting trucks over a certain size is inconsistent with that purpose. Thank you. Over to public hearing to ask whether no fair or substantial relationships exist between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. Talk about the specific restriction here being the one-and-a-half-ton vehicle. Greater than. Greater than. Have any in the public want to comment on this section? Any other people in the public want to comment?
I don't think you all listen very good.
Well, we listen and we make the decision.
I would like to make just one comment. I noticed that you haven't reviewed the letters that you had last time from the people who live across the street from them.
That will be, we decided earlier that would be reviewed after we get through the specific comments on the, that was brought up earlier, that we have all these letters that will be put in the record if we get to the last item, which was granting and not granting of the application. All right, let's read what the state thinks. "Is the restriction on the property necessary not to give full effect to the purpose of the ordinance, or can relief be granted to this property without frustrating the purpose of the ordinance? The full application of the ordinance to this particular property necessary to promote a valid public purpose. This test attempts to balance the public good resulting from the application of the ordinance against a potential harm to a private landowner. It goes to the question of whether it creates a necessary or unnecessary hardship." Basically, it bails down to, is this, is there more public good resulting from the application of the ordinance against a potential harm to a private landowner? Rolls down to that, I guess. All of these things sort of bounce into other. The next one is the variance would not include, injure the private or public rights of others. This is the same thing. Private landowner, the potential harm of a private landowner.
Redundant.
They are redundant. A lot of these, and as I think you've read the statute from the beginning, it says, "A lot of these hardship, a lot of these are redundant to one stage or another."
We make a finding of fact that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. If all vehicles are to be parked in the driveway, within the bounds of the applicant's property, the tow truck being empty, cars all being registered, under four vehicles parked on the property.
Any discussion?
How would you enforce something like that?
If.
What does that mean? If you drive by there and you see a truck on the, a car on the tow truck, does he automatically lose the variance forever? Does he come back to the ZBA? Does he go to court? Does he go to the planning board?
Is that enforceable by fine?
No, no. That's.
How is it enforced now?
The code enforcement officer's job.
To enforce something that's possibly to be enforced, but.
It is basically, that's just what it is.
If he's parked on the road, one of his vehicles, I just, I don't know. I don't know how.
Basically, that's the code enforcement job. If he feels there's a violation of any subdivision, site plan, zoning regulation, whatever, there are procedures that he has to address, bring this to.
Do you have a recommendation of something that could be put in there to make it so that it would be more palatable to enforce if there were something that came?
No, I don't think that's.
I was hoping you would.
We're getting, we're getting out of our jurisdiction there.
I thought it, I don't know, I'm trying to make it clear and concise.
Yeah.
Four vehicles on the driveway, not loaded.
Those are clear and concise. If they do not adhere to these, then the appeal, if the, anybody who does see that this is not, they are to contact the code enforcement officer, and then he has procedures that he has to follow, like any zoning violations, any site plan violation, any subdivision violation. If they find that one of those occurs, there are steps the code enforcement officer or the zoning administrator has to follow.
The pictures given to us from the public show that, I mean, it looks to me, and after hearing the testimony, the major problem is that there's cars out of their place, cars on the side of the road, and there's more vehicles there sometimes than four.
Right.
And that, with those limitations, I would think we'd correct that issue.
Right. And all we can do is put these limitations on. And it is not zoning board's duty to enforce this. We just put the conditions on it, and then either neighbors or the code enforcement officer sees this, he has to, any more than a police officer would do it, if he found a violation of any.
Have you got the motion?
Yeah, it's basically, there's no fair and substantial relation exists between the general purpose of zoning ordinance and specific restriction of property. If all vehicles are parked on a property, basically the same, there's no more than four vehicles.
Truck unloaded.
All vehicles be registered, the tow truck will be empty.
Not a good reason to put down there. It's a transitional area.
On 152.
Transitional area.
Well, basically, we're talking about the ton and a half here because it, well, the general purpose of the only ordinance is not going down. Specific restriction on property is the ton and a half truck. That's the specific restriction on the property.
But it's a transitional area, so we can get back to half, one and a half.
I'll make the motion that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of this ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. If all, only four cars are parked on the applicant's property, if all cars are parked on the driveway, if all cars are within the bounds of the applicant's lot, and the tow truck is unloaded, all cars are registered.
I'll second that.
All right.
Discussion? All of the favor, anything for the same, I raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The third section of hardship is the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. This conclusion is based on the following facts. I've been reading the map. Okay. We're going to make some changes here. As far as the applicants are aware, no neighbors oppose this request. The size of the premises is large enough to allow the parking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I agree with Board Member Wang that a lot of this is redundant, and when you let judges and lawyers try to explain things, they make it more complicated and not less complicated. The third aspect, would not injure the public or private rights of others, there's just no evidence that allowing a truck to park in this driveway will injure anybody's rights. It just, it's, it's just park there. Vehicles are a fact of our life. We drive vehicles, we need vehicles, and sometimes you need a tow truck. And it's, it's another vehicle, and it happens to be greater than one and a half tons, but that's not, that doesn't injure anybody's rights. It's in a zone which the ordinance itself is, it says is a transition zone, and it's on a major road, and it's just parked there. That's all. Just parked there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Over to public hearing on whether the variance would injure the public or private rights of others.
Jenny Griswold, 26, South Main Street. What about in the summertime, when the radio and the beep-beeps are going off in his truck? The other thing that bothers me, he has many times used our driveway for turning the flatbed around, for getting vehicles to his backyard. It breaks up the end of the driveway, and we don't want that to be something that's going to go on.
Thank you.
Because our driveway is not part of his property.
I don't think, oops.
Kaya Wieszewski, 236, South Main Street. I have, my major concern one is the enforcement of this, that if in fact it can be enforced or it can't. Sounds to me like it can't be enforced unless I see it, I call the police, I call the zoning, I'm assuming you're the person that I would notify. To me, you're making a variance that pretty much he can do what he wants because it's not going to be able to be enforced, unless it falls on the burden of the people across the street who wrote you a letter about their concerns, the people who live in the duplex, their concerns and our concerns as direct property owners to him. And keep in mind too, you say it's just 152. It is residential, it has a high school at one section of it, he's smack in the middle of the two schools, kids walk by all the time. So, I mean, it isn't just, quote, 152 commercial. That might be above Moonlight Bridge, but it certainly is not in that residential area. Thank you.
Any other comments in the public? Over to public hearing. Aye. Enforcement of all zoning regulations, whether it's planning or site plan or whatever, is, the penalties aren't that.
Severe.
Severe that really.
Penalties?
Cease and desist.
$255 the first day and $500 every day after that.
If they continue, right, if they're notified.
Would that be after a cease and desist?
That would be upon notification that there's a violation of the zoning ordinance.
You guys hear that?
Something about cease and desist.
They were discussing, may I address the audience, Mr. Chairman? They were addressing the enforcement issue that you brought up, and the question was, what are the penalties involved if there is a violation incurred? The, upon notice to the individual or upon notice of the violation itself, the fine would start out at $250 a day and then $500, or $550 every day after that, so the fine is more than doubled.
So then how long can this go on before you no longer can have a business?
Well, it would be a matter for the court to decide at that time. The court would be involved. And in a situation like that, it could even be entered as a misdemeanor rather than just a violation of the zoning ordinance. You're welcome.
Have any other comments in the public? Over to public hearing.
I'd like to make a, can I make a statement of fact?
Yes.
The variance would not, statement of fact is that the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others if they're under four cars in the driveway, all vehicles are registered, all vehicles are within the applicant's lot, tow truck is empty. That's my statement of fact.
Any discussion on a statement of fact? Any discussion on the statement of fact?
I would think that you would have to have it in there that when the vehicle is unattended, it cannot be left running. And when it's unattended, the radio will be off.
Is that for enforcement? Jeez.
What do you mean, they leave their radio on all night sometimes?
I was just saying for enforcement, they were, the public was concerned, said the radio's gotta be the toughest. It's
They're all tough.
I mean, if you have the tow truck in the dri, in the road.
I don't think that'd be
Now it's, was that a
Condition?
Let's just figure if the public's concerned about it, the tow, it's clear now, if, with a condition like this, it's pretty clear it's in the driveway. If the, if the thing is in the road, it's, and it becomes a concern of the public, the public would notify the officials, and it would be taken care of from there. Notify the police. Whether they'll do a thing about it or not, it's not, is it illegal to park there? Maybe not, but at least Senate would be on the record.
Yeah.
It was determined by the Highway Safety Committee that it was an issue of safety to be parked on the road.
Right, and I think everyone agrees, everybody agrees that, well, where the highway safety was concerned when they were parking on one fifty-two, that it was an issue, and that they did have many complaints, and I think we've addressed those complaints.
Pardon me?
Didn't they hit the thing?
Tow truck.
Tow truck.
Took the mirror off. I mean, gotta keep it in the driveway maybe. Oh, my lord. Can I make a motion?
Yeah, well, I guess you have.
Oh, yeah, added.
Oh, oh, you wanna add that the
Mr. Shelton's mentioned that, that the truck
The truck will not be left running unattended.
I think that's an important thing. I think that's important, especially in that neighborhood, I don't think, I think that's, that is an important consideration.
And the devices, the devices of the truck will not be left on while unattended?
Flashers.
Flashers, no making lift go up and down with the remote. No, they, the speaker, speaker, I could understand how that would be. Is there any way to take care of the CB?
It isn't a CB, it's a triple A radio, and the only way they can hear it, they're talking to us. And when, at night, the windows are up, and all the windows are closed.
I've driven by that place and I've heard it, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's up loud and turn it down. But that's the only way it shuts off. They've had it wired directly so it doesn't shut off. That's the way they have the radios, so we don't have to keep bending over and turning them up, turning them on, because we forget to turn them on. It's no big deal, I mean, I can turn it down. It's on an extension speaker.
There's no switch on and off on that?
There is, there's a little tiny on and off button on the radio.
Yeah.
I mean, I can turn it off if you want me to turn it off.
When it's not attended, is there a reason for it to be on?
I mean, to, to come up and, and, I would say whine over a radio, I mean, just ask me to turn it off, I'll turn it off.
Yeah, I just picture
Well, we heard documentation that it was blaring at night.
Oh, yeah, I know, I could hear it downtown.
Yeah, well, I, I, well, I don't live in your neighborhood, so I don't know, but we heard a statement to the fact.
I guess that, that would be a condition that we will add on to at the end if we so feel.
Can I make the motion?
You, the motion so far is we're not in the public rights or private rights of others with the same conditions that we had before, and we're adding now the truck will not be left running when unattended, the radio not on.
I think that's, is that what you want to say?
Is that what you want, Rich?
I, it sounds, I, I put it as the truck's accessories, including a radio, would not, not be on.
That's right. Okay. All favor of the motion, Singapore, say nine, raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Post. The variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. Is this the reason I have the ordinance provide for a home-based business? Excuse me, to effectively perform our business, we need access to our truck. This is consistent with the spirit and purpose of the ordinance. Is that what you have on yours?
I believe I'm bound to substantial justice, the fourth criteria.
Wrong.
Okay, I guess that was part of the motion, which should not be in there. You're right, I'm sorry. So that doesn't belong there. All right, the fourth item, substantial justice done, it would be unjust to not allow the tow truck to be accessible by allowing it to be parked when not in use, substantial justice is done by granting the variance.
And I would just add, Mr. Chairman, that I, that listening to the discussion of the board, this is a unique function of the board, substantial justice, and you really addressed that by the conditions that, that all directed at substantial justice for everybody concerned. And I believe the granting of the, of the variance with the anticipated conditions would be substantial justice, and that's really your, your call, and it's unique to you.
Open the public hearing, by granting the variance, substantial justice will be done. Public comment? I'll close the public hearing. The board, the office of state planning says it is not possible to set up rules that can measure or determine justice. Each case must be individually determined by board members. In fact, the only guiding rule is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. The injustice must be capable of relief by granting of a variance that meets the other qualifications. The Board of Adjustment cannot alleviate an injustice by granting an illegal variance.
Can I make a statement of fact? Can I make a statement of fact?
Yes.
I'd like to make a statement of fact that substantial justice is done if four car, stating all the same restrictions as we have in the past, under four cars in the driveway, all vehicles registered, all vehicles within the lot, tow truck to be empty, truck not to be left on while unattended, or other accessories such as the radio to be left on while unattended. That satisfies complaints from the public and also allows the applicant to continue his business within the town. Yes, that's my statement.
Any discussion on the No discussion, any?
No.
All of the favors seen by the same eye, raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Post. The next item is the Values surrounding properties will not be diminished. Property values have been increasing when a truck was parked, property was sold for increasing values.
Very brief, Mr. Chairman, there's just been no evidence that, that existence of a truck in the driveway would affect property values, and I submit that it will not, and the very next door neighbor is a real, is in real estate, and if that were the case, we would know about it. But it just, there's just no evidence that it would diminish property values, and the evidence is to the contrary, that property values have been going up.
Open a public hearing as to whether value of surrounding properties will not be diminished. I'll close the public hearing. Statement of fact?
I'd like to make a statement of fact that value of surrounding properties will not be diminished. If the vehicles kept on the property are all registered, as we've noted before, having four in that driveway would just be inherent of neat storage of the vehicles, there's no other way to store four vehicles. With all on the property, that the, I see no reason that the surrounding property values would be diminished. The radio will be turned down, off. No truck, no car on the truck.
I think you're making unfair requests of the applicant. If it's the Fourth of July weekend, he's got company coming down to visit him, you want him to tell his company they gotta park somewhere else? Or Christmas, he has people coming over to visit? How can he tell people to park somewhere else?
Because that's part of the conditions, the variance is granted, they either abide by these conditions or they shouldn't accept the thing, that's
But I think it's also unfair for the, for the abutters that have been concerned about site, as they come down that road and somebody hit the truck, I think that's unfair too.
I agree with you as well as that, but I think it's unfair to put limitations on his parking.
Parking lot's full, go to the next parking lot.
Every site plan
But there's also on that
Every site plan that you
Parked at the school.
determines parking, parking, and this is no different. This is a unique condition that because of granting this, they have to accept conditions that are not normally applied to the average homeowner.
Well, and I agree with you, site plan regulations do deal with that, but a site plan doesn't deal with single-family residential, and I think he's losing some of his rights here as well.
He is, he absolutely is.
But he has, they haven't said anything about it.
He's gaining what he wants.
Yeah, it, that's part of the
He's gaining more benefit.
Balance that you get when you ask for something like this. You do lose some of your rights.
But they're also keeping, retaining the right to run their business, but, I mean, he's take, I think that's infringing on, if he were allowed to have that truck there, from what I hear from the public, that's infringing on their rights. Or the, or the radio, the right of quiet enjoyment. Living on Lita Lane, I know all of that.
Thing is, if this was a truck like this, that was a ton and a half truck, they would have the same problems, but they'd have no relief from it. If it was a, if this wrecker happened to be a ton and a half truck, they could do this same thing without any of these restrictions that we're imposing on him now.
Yeah.
So, and the neighbors would have the same problems without any relief.
People park up and down that street all the time anyway, but, you know, anyway. That's, my motion is that the value of prop, surrounding properties will not be diminished, all vehicles are to be parked in the driveway, under four cars in the driveway, all properties within the property bounds of the applicant, truck not to be running while left unattended, radio and accessories while it's unattended are to be turned off, the tow truck to be empty.
I, I guess, my own view, I guess we're, this sort of overkill, I think the attorney said it basically is that there's no evidence that was given that the property values will be diminished, and I think that is adequate for answering this particular criteria.
Curb appeal is value.
Pardon?
Curb appeal. I just, I've always thought it's part of value, it's being value of property, I've got a house and land. Curb appeal's also, I always thought, is also an aspect of value. If you drive by a house and you've got the neighboring property looking like junk, are you gonna buy this property or the property that's in a, you would obvi, I would think it's the obvious decision to go to the nicer maintained. So this, I think by maintaining the front of that property, or by getting those vehicles onto the driveway, that would add to the curb appeal of that neighborhood.
Okay, I get you, I get you, okay. So you're basically saying that, that this is gonna make
More palatable.
The possibility of diminishing less, okay.
More palatable.
Right, okay.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Allen Swinger, favor of the motion, Singapore, say nine, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Post. Okay, now we've got the Looking for the language here that they recommend using for the, after
I'm gonna have to eat peanut butter now. I'm Leo, you're on TV.
No, we're not.
It's on hold. Still playing.
Really? Yeah, I guess we're getting into page thirty-six, if you're reading it on, I think it. The Board of Adjustment, after conducting the hearing, could simply vote to approve or disprove the application. General fairness to all parties concerned, however reinforced by the Hampshire Supreme Court decision, strongly indicates that the Board should prepare a statement of its reasons, since the decision of the Board of Adjustment so important is necessary for both the appealing party and the municipality to have a clear record of what occurred. The Court has stated does not feel entire record should have to be reviewed to determine whether or not the action of the administrative board is appropriate. As a source of documentation for a community's position, the Board should state all the reasons for its all the reasons for its decision to allow for proper review, if that should be necessary. And that basically, I guess we've, we've gone through those five or six conditions we're talking about. Statement of reasons forming the penic seed, reasons- Reasons may be found effective if they omit an issue essential to the decision made by the board. The requirement means the board must do more than state the conclusions in general terms. Not sufficient for the board to simply use their own language to state to say, for instance, what the decision was. Oh, shit. Okay. Page thirty-seven? I guess then, there should be one clearly stated motion to approve for the following reasons. Or to disapprove for the following reasons duly seconded, discussed, and voted on by the whole board. The motion fails, members have the ability to make a different motion.
You've got all the conditions written down, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, basically, I guess that's what I'm trying to see is what, uh, how we're gonna carry thi- this last part of it.
I'm reading it here.
Do we have to state what occurred, or is that, does that take care of itself when you state the reasons?
No, I, I think we should-
What do you say if I say, having met the five criteria with the following conditions, and you read the conditions?
Yeah, I, I guess that's what I'm saying is right now-
You read all the conditions, so we'll have them in.
Yeah, well, I guess before we get to that, we, we've got to put in the record, which we talked about earlier, the, uh, letters that were read. We have a letter from two twenty-nine South Main Street. The guy in case oh six oh one, I am unable to attend the hearing this evening due to prior work commitment. I live directly across the street from Lawrence Stephen Land and objected a request. The property already has multiple vehicles, including other business trucks parked in front of the house. While I do not object to this or to the running of a business from the property, the tow truck poses other issues. For example, a radio on the truck is left on sometime necessary for business, but incoming calls are heard on my property, especially in the warmer weather when doors and windows are kept open. Addition to parking of a truck is not in keeping with the character and enablement. Thank you for considering my opinion, Janet Prescott. We've read the, uh, letter from the Highway Safety Committee. Was there any others, Dan, you know? Okay, so this end, it should be one clearly stated motion to approve for the following reasons. That duly seconded, discussed, and voted on by the whole board. I, that's the point we're at now. I guess we want a motion, something to affect that it meets the criteria and it is-
That's why I'm saying, having met the five criteria, the following conditions, and you should enter all the conditions that we said.
Right.
So that they're there.
So the conditions that I have down here now are, you're limited to four vehicles, all vehicles registered, tow truck is empty, all vehicles parked on the property. Truck will not be left unattended, left running when unattended. The radio will not be left on. Any other ones?
And I think that them, on the property is, is in the driveway.
That's what, I said that, they're not in the driveway.
Said on the property. On the, on the property in the driveway, I think you should add that to it.
Park all vehicles on the property in the driveway, limit it to four vehicles, all vehicles registered, tow truck was empty. Truck will not be left running, unattended. Radio will not be left, left on.
Now, before we flash it off the lights.
That the truck shall not be left running and all accessories shall be turned off while, including-
Truck lights and radio.
Lights, radio. What was the other one that, that, somebody mentioned?
Vehicle on the truck?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I bet that. And what do you call those lights?
Flashing.
Flashlights.
You got them all written down now?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, grant a variance to permit an automobile towing service to be conducted off premises with the parking of one flatbed recovery tow truck in the driveway of the residence, where parking of vehicles weighing more than one point five tons is not permitted under section seven, uh, oh one B four. The property is located at two thirty-four South Main Street. Tap, tax map U four lot seventy-two R two zone.
We have a second.
I second that.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, Singapore, Garcia, high, raise right hand.
Aye, aye.
Guys wanna break, or you wanna go with that?
Yeah, pee break.
Okay, we'll have a five minute break for bathroom.
Both fishing rods? Did you go down and see them?
I got it.
Yep, how many was it?
No, I only, well, it was at the other one. I went down.
Thought I could see it bad.
Just tonight.
Well, I feel it too, it's air.
You know, it makes me smile, Richard. It's okay for you guys to have a voting. The board is so close.
Yeah.
So you don't have to have a vote for voting.
You need three, you need three parts of your votes, you can have three.
You can have three people.
As it says, if there's openings-
Somebody might, is she a man or does she show up for two months only, boy, please? Internet, and I know why, I'm not stupid. The other thing that bothers me is, they've asked for another variance, like you probably know.
Two other variances?
Well, I know they've asked for one, but they already have a second business started there. They have a picnic table business going on, if you saw the pictures. He asked to have a shed put there, knowing that he had to get various, but he put the shed there anyway. This is all since his truck business started. Do you people let him get away with it? What can I say? You know better. I know you too damn well. I've listened to you for years, Richard. And I don't feel that the board has really been honest. I really don't. But I think somebody is appointed to a board. It's a public trust, and they should at least come to all the meetings. For six years, I was a town council. In six years, I missed one meeting because I was the last one.
That's no excuse.
I was elected, and I felt that it was my duty to the people who elected me. I feel the same way about this board as I do any board. You people are not prepared. You do not have an agenda.
I'm not a lawyer, I'm doing the best I can.
I have the observation.
And I'm doing the best I can.
I know you are.
And if people aren't happy, then they should sit, get somebody here to run it. That'll make them happy.
Your chairman should have an agenda, and you should know what's going on. You should read your agenda before you start. He doesn't, I know. I've been in this town too damn long, I think.
This is the first time we follow these, this is new to us, this publication.
I know, but don't you read things before you start?
I spent three days on this, three days I spent on this. Now I can show you every Supreme Court rule that was told this way, though, they would never-
I mean, he's not gonna park their truck in there, honestly. You know it, and I know it. If there's a bad accident and somebody gets killed, who's gonna pay for it? You're gonna sue the town or the zoning board?
No, neither one, really.
Well, I might just do that.
The, uh, board has acted on what they believe to be the honest decisions. Whether or not they're completely informed or not is another question.
You can challenge it.
What's it use? But I'll be the first to call the chief of police, believe me.
Yeah, well, you can challenge it, that's no priority.
If any of my tenants get injured because of the way they park.
I've read in the Supreme Court rulings that deny this, and they still approve it, so what could I do?
You have to drive out into the middle line of the road to see what's coming up the street.
I know, it's a dangerous spot, yeah.
And it's scary in the winter time when it's snowing.
Oh, it's even worse.
What are you doing?
Not anymore. What was the rod you bought?
I bought a H L Lennon, cash flow one, I bought a- Originally, originally had like six tips or whatever.
I never heard of any of the six tips.
Bag is made for, the plot, the head, and five tips. Now, I don't know if it had, uh, six tips. I don't know if it originally had two heads, five tips, or six, but the bag's all original. And it's, it's got the stampings on the barrels, eight, uh, eighteen seventy-five, eighteen seventy-eight, on the barrels.
Huh.
The, the patent standings.
Yeah.
And the real seat is early one, it says, uh, H L Lennon Rod Maker, Leonard Rod Company, that's a little ago.
I wonder if one was made for, uh, stolen.
No, 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 it was originally for, the other.
Well, I get the flyer, I think it was stolen.
Then these, the other rod, yeah, I got one too. The other rod, he showed me was probably black. It's made out of Calcutta cane.
Yeah.
And it was mounted on there, I don't know how many years ago, but the plaque, the guy died in nineteen oh two. That's got the patent dates on the barrels, but there's no name on the, on the body.
What did you give the board right to it?
No, it's, it's, it's just, it's on, it's on the, the slots up there. Hung up the other slots. And it's mounted on a presentation board with the guy's name. He's from Rhode Island, or any guy, he wasn't even born yet, but he's, I think, I think he was. Met the guy in offer for that, but I ain't got it yet. I called him up, made him an offer, I called the guy, sent an email to a guy in Virginia.
Yeah.
He says, if you're interested, and he's like, let me know where it is, I'll buy it.
So then major interest.
I don't know anything about that.
You can't tell a kid something like that.
If you ever keep me posted about it.
Do you want me to email you?
Yeah, you can send me, uh-
But he's got the, he's got the Kerry Stevens flyers.
Oh, he does? I'll work what condition he was.
Do you want me to email you some pictures? Do you want me to email you some pictures from that? From the Africa clan? I have, I went, um, to Africa for a little bit. I have pictures that I can email you if you want.
Oh, yeah.
I sent it to Gil and Dan.
Oh, sure, sure. L, L P, fill in? At Yahoo? Dot com?
It's coming from Rick Bowen ten.
Okay.
So he's, so I just put Africa pictures.
Okay, sure, yeah, thank you. This is good, yeah.
Yeah. Therefore, a woman, she get ten cents for it?
Yeah, or maybe six cents.
Maybe six cents.
Well, they nice. Where's he going, he coming back?
I don't know.
Yeah, he's coming back, it's wooksy. Yeah, but, uh, let's just make him offer for the flies.
Yeah.
There, there's a lot of singles of streams.
Yeah.
And there's some doubles, the doubles are rust, the cannibals, what do I want?
They are?
Yeah.
When, I, did they are, the original ones, all only had singles though, didn't they?
No, 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 she made them both. The very first, the, the, when she did, when she, when she, uh, did the gray ghost, the gray ghost fly, that was her famous fly, the gray ghost.
Oh, yeah.
There's nothing, I didn't see any in this lot. Uh, at least I didn't notice any.
What was her name?
But I didn't have my book there anyway, Kerry Stevens. She was from Rangeley, Maine.
Isn't that the fly that catch, you pretty much catch anything?
The green one.
Wasn't the nine-three for nine pound, three ounce, uh,
Yeah.
Fish on Rasely?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nine-three, she drives that, that's in there.
The what? Do you fly fish?
Yeah.
What's that company, Eld, Eldon or something like that? It's a company, it begins with an E, Eldra, Eldren?
Eldridge Fly Shop in Cape Nettie, Maine?
The guy, Eldridge, I met him. He's the owner of the, of the, he makes fly rods, I guess. Eldridge Fly Rods, or Eldwin?
I know, it was an Eldridge sporting place in Cape Nettie, Maine, on Route one.
This guy was outside, and he had sausages outside a kid or training post. I'm like, oh, buy a sausage, you know? And he's like, no, they're free. So how, how are they, are you promoting something? He's not on the owner. And you, he made, I guess he makes these Eldridge Fly Rods.
Yeah.
Sorry we're late, but somebody locked the door, and we had to come up in the elevator.
No, how, was the elevator unlocked?
Yeah.
Which door?
The one you opened and shut. Somehow it was locked. Both of them.
The outside door?
Both of them, yeah.
Okay. Meeting back to order at nine fifty-five.
Back to order.
The- Second application we have before us is the Lawrence Stephen Long variance reference six and three oh four B of the New Market Zoning Ordinance. The applicant requests a variance to permit the temporary placement of a movable eight by ten plastic storage shed within nine feet of the side of the lot where the zoning ordinance requires a fifteen foot setback. The shed is already placed in that location, the property is located at two thirty-four South Main Street, tax map U four lot seventy-two in the R two zone. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, uh, we've, we've applied for both a variance and a equitable waiver. Uh, just some background before I get into the, I gue- I guess I'll go through the variance first, or- Okay. The, uh, the applicants, uh, like a lot of other homeowners, purchased one of these, uh, uh, sheds at Lowes in Epping. It's an eight by ten, uh, plastic shed that you, uh, that you put together like an erectuset. Uh, it's a-
It's a, it's not, it's not affixed to the ground. It's on blocks. It, it obviously can be moved. And I've just got a picture of the inside of the shed. It's used for storage of yacht equipment. And in my brief field trip around town, uh, these are the rules, not the exceptions. Uh, it seems like everybody in town has a storage shed. And it's always next to the, next to the side of, next to the fence or in the back, next to the fence. I mean, that's where people put them. And, and it's, it's almost universal. The, but I would say that it's a, that it's a sort of an adjunct of modern living. They didn't apply for a, a building permit. And you would have to be a lawyer to know that it required a building permit because in the, in the ordinance, in defining a structure itself, the, the definition of a, a structure is anything constructed or erected on or in the ground. And for most people, they would not think that they're constructing this, they're assembling it, putting it together or erecting it. I agree that the ordinance does cover the sheds that you buy at Home Depot and, and Lowe's. It clearly does, and people should get building permits before they buy them. But that, I don't think has happened in this town, probably in most towns. The, uh, the bulkier standards apply to this one. And, and, and if I may, I'd just like to go through them en masse, or shall we do it one by one?
Well, I, I want to get my hands around, I thought we were throwing something new to me that I, I thought the only, I, I know I'm also on the planning board and, and this is going to come up at their next meeting of what this have. I took a ride around Maple Crest today.
Okay, I did too.
There's almost every, every house in Maple Crest has one of these.
It's unbelievable.
And, and it's.
And, and they're all next to the fence?
They're all right up against the fence. And I, I guess the how did we get this way? If we've had this ordinance all these years and here we have, uh, I know way back when I was on a planning board several years ago, there was the code enforcement at the time, there was some discussion if it was only on the ground and not out of the thing, it didn't require it. But I guess it's been changed since then.
Well, I don't know if it has, but I think, as I said, if you are a lawyer, you can read this to, uh,
I agree.
To, to say that they require a building permit. But if you're not.
Well, I, I've always thought the only problem was setback. But now, as hearing from you, there also a problem, you can't even put it together without a building permit, which that's, a building permit probably costs you more than a shed did.
The
I don't think so.
Well, by the time you get through a notifying, butters and everything, it.
Well, one of the sheds you saw at ten Maple Crest was before this board, a year and a half or so ago, with violation of the setback, and you approved that one.
I'm going to kill a dog.
Yes, exactly.
I, I, I guess that, I'm, I'm thinking we have a problem with our zoning regulations, but.
And especially sheds out the most important issues that come from enforcement.
I know, and, and that's why I think at the next planning board meeting, we'll have to see what we can do about this.
Make them suspend them.
That's a triage.
I guess the question is whether.
I, I think what has happened is that the modern day customs have just surpassed the ordinance in this respect. That, uh, and if the town wanted to really regulate them, it wouldn't be, there, there would be a change in the ordinance because there are too many people that, that find them convenient. And, and, and really the logical place for them, since they're not permanent, is, is, is out of the way so that they don't interfere with the curb appeal of the property and that they're as unobtrusive as possible. And to put this anywhere else on this lot, it would be more obtrusive. In fact, it, the, a budding property has two sheds, sheds right on the property line. On, 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 I mean, they're rampant, they're everywhere. And, and I would say that, you know, it probably, it, it fits the definition of equitable waiver as, as I, as, yes, it does, because.
I'll take exception to that.
Well, I know you will.
Because I read equitable waiver and it's.
Well, it's not the outcome of the ignorance or the law or ordinance, failure to inquire, obfuscation, misrepresentation of bad faith. You see your neighbors have them, they must be legal.
Mr. Long was informed prior to his purchasing the shed and when the, the day the shed arrived, that he needed a permit and that the setback was required for that shed.
My understanding is when, when he, when he had bought it.
Prior to buying it and the day the shed arrived.
The day the shed, it arrived after he bought it.
All right, I guess it's not.
It wasn't up yet.
It wasn't up, but it was, he had bought it, I mean.
You still know there was a, a setback, a requirement for the setback.
Okay, but the, the, I would say it's not contrary to the public interest to allow a six-foot variance from the side lot. Requirement, uh, he could probably get another foot, but then he goes right on to, a foot on to his driveway, which we know now is going to be used. The, uh, the literal enforcement of, of this ordinance under the bulk air standard would result in unnecessary hardship because it's needed to enable him to use the property consistent with modern use of property. That's, it's, it's everywhere. It's a, it, it's, it's prevalent. And that the benefit of the use, and it is a benefit to the neighbors as well to have inside storage of all the stuff that we accumulate for outside use that never goes into the house. To have it in a neat enclosure and, and, and with proper landscaping and everything. It's painted there, it's the same color as the house. And, and the spirit of the ordinance would be met here with, with allowing this minimal variance from a side setback. Substantial justice, we've and, and the value of surrounding properties won't be diminished because everybody has them. And if you don't have one, you probably have one. I don't know why I don't have one. I put it under my porch. But I, I, I think that that it's a, that it's a absolute good use of, of a variance to allow a nine-foot setback where fifteen is required for this kind of a, a use. And it just alleviates the lawnmower and the ladder and the other stuff that's, that's outside the house normally to be undercover and out of sight. That's all I have to say.
All right, I, I guess the, so the variance that we're talking about now is just a side setback variance.
That's correct.
I, really, I don't think I want to spend three hours on this one here either.
Not. I could eat peanut butter now.
The, just to bring to the board's attention, this is a plot plan from the abut. Uh, which if you're facing Mr. Long's property, it would be the house to the right.
To the right, okay.
On the other side of the fence?
Yes. That tall fence there isn't on the property line.
It's a stone wall.
Is there a stone wall there? So what the?
It's holding up the sheds.
Oh. Remember where the property line used to be on that property?
Yeah.
Is it at a ninety-degree angle from the road? Or is it, because this shows it as being a greater angle from the road than what the fence is. So I don't think Mr. Long or, or the abut may know, but I don't think Mr. Long knows where the property line is. I don't think he has information to this plot plan.
It is a very sharp.
Pardon me?
It is a very sharp angle.
But it's not the fence? No.
There's no way of knowing that legally. She's, just gets it.
It's not a guess, it's a certified plan.
Yeah, it's recorded.
I sold the property to her, uh. How many years ago?
We will not go into discussions out here, please. We've, uh, we have the applicant's presentation. Guess I'd like to have some discussion on the board of how they would like to proceed on this application. It's so minimal, I don't think we want to go through the exercise we went through before.
I think all five-part criteria have been met.
Can I make a statement of fact that satisfies all five? I feel.
Without addressing them?
I would like to make a, I would like to address all five in a row because I have a statement of fact that I think I can read off for each five in a row. That way we both, we could do it all at once, but also address them individually in discussion.
All five parts.
The applicant has given basically his five. Is that the way you guys want to go on this, is take them in lump and?
Make a motion, all five-part criteria have been met.
You got to have something in the record. Yeah, I, I guess.
How far is it from the lot, lying from, from the plant that you got over there?
Well, we can't judge that.
Well, basically, what, okay, getting back to that. If the applicant says he wants to put the shed nine feet from the, he wants a variance to allow it to go nine feet instead of fifteen feet, then it'll be up to the code enforcement officer to certify that he is meeting that nine feet. Whatever the code enforcement officer says he will require to meet this nine feet will have to be done. That's all we're going to say, we're not going to say where
Where's the boundary?
Nine feet is, where the boundaries is. That's not our determination, it's not just determination. They're asking us to put it nine feet, allow it to put nine feet
Instead of fifteen.
From the boundary instead of fifteen feet. Then it'll be up to the code enforcement officer to see that that occurs.
Boundary. Let me see that picture.
Just sketch, just, yeah, no. Some nets, but not many nets and bounds on it. So if that's the, uh, so we're not going to concern ourselves where the property line is. That's not our concern. What, all our concern would be if we grant this applicant, grant this variance, it'll be up to the code enforcement officer to see that it is placed nine feet from the property line wherever, whatever he needs to determine to do it.
Have you already measured it, Dan? Is it nine feet now?
Yeah.
All right.
And there is no other location for the shed on the property unless they put it way on the left side, which is away from their driveway. They've got a fence up in the back of the yacht running in line with the side of the house. It wouldn't probably be appropriate to be back there. So in actuality, this probably is the best place for the shed and probably should be approved as submitted.
And it's act, it's actually where they said it is, and that's the approval they're looking for.
Well, not really, because we don't, it's somehow we have to determine what the property line is.
Yeah, then, but that's not our concern.
But it's correct.
That's, that would be the, between the applicant and the code enforcement.
Should hear from the public too.
All right, so basically, if, if you guys are satisfied with going through this, we'll open a public hearing up, we'll take public comment, and we'll do it like we did previous to our latest.
All five-part criteria.
We'll do all five at once. And if we go to Superior Court, they're going to knock us down and make us rehear.
Now I won't listen, no. They're going to check.
Just to carry on a little conversation about sheds. Is it, and it may come up at the planning board, but what's happened is the manufactured sheds have really not been complying with the structural roof loads. They have not been using the proper nailing patents for rafters. And that's the reasoning why there's a permitting process for sheds. The type of shed that Mr. Long has, has no, none of those characteristics because it's a pre-manufactured, snapped together.
Not right in the middle.
Away from that, the other sheds certainly have problems, a great deal of problems. And that's why the permitting is required.
First one to come out there all.
I guess the question is, now you have building regulations where life safety is an issue. We have building reg, some uses are not. What do you do with all these, these canvas-type things that they store bolts and everything? Issue is how that, built to specifications, but.
And if we read the ordinance, if the structure is anything built on or in the ground, they were structured too.
That, that's why I think we have to bring the ordinance up to today's.
Because it was erected.
Age, because it's, uh, it's, it's just.
When it gets to that point, you better find me some help.
Yeah, I, I guess it's, it's crazy. It's, okay. But all right, if that's the statement, the board wants to go this way, we'll hold, we'll hold a public hearing. We'll take the comments from the public. Then we'll close the public hearing and we'll discuss.
Entertainer motion.
Entertainer motion, okay. We'll open a public hearing on the request for a variance to allow the shed to be put nine feet from the side setback where fifteen feet is required by the zoning regulations.
Jenny Griswold, two twenty-six South Main Street.
I'm sorry, I didn't see what there you got there.
I have no objection to them building a shed. What I object to is the way he did it.
Okay.
He knew he needed a variance, he did it anyway, exactly the way he did with the tow truck. And as far as I can see, he already has another home business on the property, the building of picnic tables and selling them.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on the request for a variance for side setback from fifteen feet to nine feet? Not, I'll close the public hearing.
Can I make a statement of fact?
No, just a motion.
Yeah, well, I guess.
Are they?
If we're but let's at least read the, the variance would not be contrary to public interest to request us for a minimal variance on a side setback for a movable storage shed. It is an attractive store bought shed. The location is the most desirable placement on the lot. That's why it'd be in public interest. The BOSHA area variance, an area variance is enabled to, is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The special condition of the property left the applicant with two choices, to place the shed beside the garage where it is, or place the shed in front of the lot. The applicants have chosen the better choice. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The front yard location is not reasonably feasible. The variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The variance allows a reasonable use of the property. A storage shed such as purchased by applicants is an ordinary reasonable use. Substantial justice is done by placing the shed on the preferred side of the lot. The value of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Storage sheds are commonplace and accepted by citizens. Inside the storage shed, lawn mower attachments, outside furniture umbrellas, and miscellaneous items are preferable to outside storage. Okay, that's
Five parts.
Application, five parts that have all been read. Now, we want to get my pencil. Go on here before you start talking.
Is it okay if I start reading the motion?
No, I'm going to write it down.
Oh, I need to.
Still got a waiver to do.
Yeah. What's that? Although if we get, if, if he gets to. Although if we get, if he gets the variance, he won't, he won't be applying for the actual waiver to get the variance.
I would like to make a motion to grant the applicant's request, the, uh, for a variance to permit the temporary placement of a movable eight by ten plastic shed within nine, no, within nine feet, no.
No closer than nine.
Closer than nine feet, that's, there's an error there.
Well, no, we're gonna, we don't care what they ask for, we tell them what we're gonna give them.
No closer than nine feet, correct myself, of the side of the lot shown on the plot plan provided by the applicant, where the zoning ordinance requires a fifteen foot setback. The shed has already been placed at the location, the property is located at two thirty-four South Main Street, tax map U four, lot seventy-two, R two zone. For the reasons that there is no other location that is reasonably feasible to, reasonably feasible.
Okay.
It's because of access ways on the property, fences and property amenities.
Okay.
The location of this maintains the aesthetics of the property.
The what?
Maintains the aesthetics, curb appeal of the property in its location, and also by storing household.
You written that down?
Yeah.
Give it to me.
If you can read it.
I'll let the secretary worry about that. All right, I, I guess you work the end.
Let me just finish reading.
Okay.
It allows space to maintain the structure. And it's not an unappealing location. And there was no public dissent, the actual, with the actual shed, just about how, how it was, uh, how it came about to be there. But there was no, no, uh, public dissent as far as, uh, the location, the placement of it.
Okay. We have a second?
Yeah, a second, yeah.
One, one comment please, Mr. Long.
Well, get the motion in a second till we have comments.
Can we change the motion?
You can't change the motion, it's up to the board, Ken.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hold on, we gotta, motion by. Seconded by who?
Richard.
Again, you're gonna take the roll call, Tom.
All right, we got a motion and a second, that will have discussion.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
The, is there a lot amount of time to determine where the lot line is?
No, that's up to the code enforcement and the applicant.
To go over this side.
I guess the question, is it the question if, what if it's, can't be, needs to be put seven feet from it to be where is that? Is that what your question is?
No, I just have to have a line to know where the nine feet is from to the shed.
Yeah, I, well, if that's the case, then you have to do what you have to do to ascertain to yourself that it's, uh.
Well, the only way to determine that is with a survey. Is there a lot line dispute?
If that's the way, that's the way.
We don't have a lot line, there is no lot line.
Well, there is, it's a deed.
Only have the dispute.
It's a deed.
This is a fence.
No, no, the fence, the fence, it's, you gotta have, if you're gonna get a variance from a lot line, you gotta know where the lot line is.
Does it stake something?
Both parties can agree that the fence is, they're the ones in dispute, not someone else, so, I mean, if two, if two neighbors agree that the lot line is the fence line, they can do that.
Yeah, but if we, if we grant a variance from the lot.
It'll be in that deed.
You mean they can, they can change the lot line by disagreeing that way?
They could have a boundary line agreement, I mean.
That boundary line adjustment going through the planning board?
Sure, yeah, well, if it's different, but for all practical purposes, the fence is the line, I mean, there has been, until this, this happened.
Now, according to the Abadas, could the, could the, could the motion read that we established a lot line within a month's time and determined from that lot line where the shed is to be placed? That takes away all the arguments, we know where the lot line is, we know where the shed is.
But it's already placed.
But the Abada's not here objecting, I mean.
Would a more reasonable request for variance be that the fence will be placed, I mean, the shed will be placed nine feet from the fence?
What if the fence is on the other?
Was it already eleven feet?
We're not, we're not, if we make, if we make that as our variance, that, that's it. We can say it's, the fence, the thing could be ten feet from the corner of the house if we want to.
It is a point of reference.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is that, is that more palatable than going to a lot line that. The only thing is, the statute, the statute does say.
Lot line?
Is from.
How about an amicable agreement between code enforcement officer and the landowner?
This is the problem.
No, 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 we're not gonna go that.
The Abada has problems also.
He's moving his.
Yeah.
We gotta know where the lot line is.
We're either gonna go, we could go to, if the board wishes to go to a motion to, boy, that, that doesn't, that doesn't bring it up to the statute.
Maybe we have help, there's a man with his hand up in the audience.
Are you, do you wish him to make a statement?
Oh, he had his, Steve, you had your hand up.
No, he doesn't want to make a statement.
He had his hand up.
No, I, I, I think, we have a statute here that says the variant, the building cannot be within fifteen feet of the lot line. And that's, we're asking for, they're asking for a variance from the lot line, any, we, we, we have to.
Establish.
Establish that, to the lot line, because that's what our statute, statute calls for.
About imaginary lot line.
I don't know.
Well, there's gotta be. How much, it's gonna cost them to actually determine a lot line? And then they're disputing, I mean, that could take.
Have a survey.
Forever, I mean, couldn't that take forever?
Well, it's not inexpensive, it's, uh, uh, I, I think the chair was correct when he first said that, that, that it's up to the code enforcement officer. If they have some reasonable belief that the lot line isn't where the fence is, then they can, uh, they can take some action that it's, uh, in violation of the, of the variance, but, uh, I think, uh, it's unreasonable for this situation to require the homeowner to go out and do a survey, it's gonna cost several thousand dollars. Well, have you?
They just had a.
Have I had one of these guys lately?
Yes, I have, actually. Normally I do it myself, though, I like a, but it's, uh, okay, it's, uh, do you see the problem in, in granting it not based on our, our regulations that call for it from the site, from the property line? If, I mean, our regulation says that no buildings would be allowed within fifteen feet of the property line.
I think the worst that could happen is that someday you have to come back and ask for further relief, say, within six feet if it, if it goes that way. I don't know which, I have no idea.
I, I guess the, the nine feet is not that critical an issue here, I guess. I mean, if it was seven feet, or five, or eight, or whatever, it's, it's, uh, I'm wondering why.
Well, if we take the information supplied by the Abadas plan, the line moves closer to the shed in reality from the plan that's submitted from the Abada.
Okay, so in other words, what you're saying, if you really found out, it may, they may move it to seven feet, within a, or six, or five, or whatever.
Exactly.
Okay, so I guess the question to this board
Left up to the discrepancy of.
Is whether we could make a variance to allow it within five feet of the property line.
To allow it to continue in its existing location. I think everybody can agree that the lot line isn't gonna come over and take up the shed.
Okay.
And that, and then it may make it a moot point.
Yeah, there will.
So what's the wording in the variance request?
Well, the variance request is one thing, whether, what we grant is another thing. We don't necessarily have to grant.
Could I reword, reword my motion?
Well.
Minimum variance on the side setback, that's all I was gonna want.
I can withdraw my second.
I would throw my first. If you put, um.
So your, your, your concern is that, what is, would you be, have a problem with granting a variance to its distant location?
I, I don't really care if it's on the lot line. All I need to know is where the lot line is, that's, that would be my concern, other than that, I don't have authority to approve something that's.
Right now, between sheds.
Yeah, I, I guess, so the question is, the nine feet is not what's critical here. The question is, what, what grant, what variance are we granting?
It's present location.
Which is within the fifteen foot setback, but due to a boundary line dispute, the exact distance is between five feet and nine feet? Just to.
It's unknown.
Well, to give a, what is it, record of, what were we supposed to do according to the, a state, I mean, a, uh, we're supposed to have reasons and a, the, what occurred? It's supposed to express in a motion, express what occurred and the reasons for the decision? Is that right from what, from the last one?
This is a different variance request, this is a.
This is right from the book we got, this two thousand six.
Yeah, this is the BOSHA rather than the simplex.
But it, oh, okay, it still doesn't.
Where'd it come from?
I'm pretty sure it was in, for closing statement.
Page thirty-six.
The BOSHA is, has entirely different criteria than the simplex. The BOSHA now is instead of three criteria, it only has two. Special conditions of the property make an area variance necessary in order to allow the applicant to construct, develop, and design. The second, the applicant cannot achieve the same benefit by some other reasonable, feasible method that would not impose an undue financial burden. There's an undue financial burden that Supreme Court threw wind that was never in existence for the last hundred years. Financial was never supposed to be a criteria for variances and.
No, it is.
Now it is.
Yeah. This shows five feet. And, and, draw, three.
How would the board feel about granting a variance to five feet? And if it doesn't, if it's closer than that, then they'd have to.
As the legal said, how about in its present location? Nobody has a problem with it. It's not on Frank Buco's land, so he's all set.
You guys are.
I think that's and/or within five feet. At its present location and/or within five feet.
Yeah.
So when the Abada comes in with their appeal is coming up to you, how are you gonna respond to them?
It's either at its present location and/or within.
Your appeal for what?
For the shed being too close to the property line.
They've got two sheds.
Well, then.
Or you mean for their variance?
Well, Dan's, Dan's comment, at its present location would suffice, I would think.
So you'll give the same forgiveness to the Abadas when they come in?
Can't guarantee anything.
I mean, this has gotta come up a lot with a lot line as.
Your coat's right up against his line. He hasn't said anything.
The, the law doesn't read that way, the law doesn't say if the Abada is okay with it, it's okay.
Right, that, that should be no consideration to granting a variance, whether the Abadas.
Approve it or disapprove it.
Can I see if this sounds okay?
The, I would, I would just suggest the real, the way, the property line is there for a reason, and when the ordinance talks about a property line, it's a point of reference that's familiar to everybody and can be researched by anybody to determine what the line is. And if we, I would suggest that if we start to do that, then we just let anybody build where they want them. The alternative to, if the applicant feels that there's a economic disaster on paying for the research and the survey, then move the shed to the other side of the house where there is no question, and there is no request for the variance.
We have requests here, so we're gonna act on the requests we have. The question is, does the board feel?
No, he's asking for within nine feet. I don't know why it's our responsibility to.
Well, I, I, I think that we do have a responsibility to, to.
But if there, how do we know there is a boundary dispute?
There isn't, it doesn't have to be one, that, that is irrelevant to the.
Isn't, don't we have a survey of one?
The question is, is that.
I think you either gotta use the nine foot and find out where the boundary is, or, or change it to its present location and forget the setback.
I would just keep it as the way it's, storage, it showed within nine feet of the, the lot line. How, where, there is a lot line, it's just.
Oh, but it definitely is.
It, the property markers that are there may have moved over time, and, I mean, how do we, well, how do we even know that the fence isn't?
Well, we don't, I guess.
Right, so why are we, I don't see why we're.
Well, I, my, my question is, I don't wanna have to go through this again in another month or two, because we found out it's eight feet, when nine feet, eight feet, or seven feet is not relevant.
Ninety, ninety percent of fences I see on plans are off a little bit, and we always go on property line. I don't know how, I mean, this, I think we're being gun shy. Is it all, to one degree or another, all fences are off.
Personal location of five feet.
I know, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm just, I don't have a problem, that, that seeing nine feet is not crucial to us.
So you think if you grant five, it would eliminate the potential for the problem?
That's right, that's what I'm thinking, if we granted a variance even closer, which, it doesn't say we have to grant what they ask for.
So how do we know it's, it's within five feet?
Well, we don't, but the thing is, it's up to you to decide, and if you.
The only way that I can define it legally is to have a, is to have a survey done.
I know, I know, and, and that's, and that's your job, basically, is, uh, I just feel that we are eliminating some problems if we can say, okay, we'll do it, we'll allow five feet, and then if it does come back with a lesson, when they do get the property thing surveyed, and it's six feet or seven feet, then they don't have to go all through this again.
Don't we have one survey of?
No, it's a sketch, it's a sketch with no, no mits and bounds, submit, no bounds.
Is it okay if I revise my motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that the, uh, variance be granted at the applicant's request for a variance to permit the temporary placement of a movable eight by ten plastic short, storage shed within five feet of the side of.
No closer than five feet.
No closer than five feet of the side of the lot, where the zoning ordinance requires fifteen feet side setback. The shed has already been placed at this, at that location. The property is located at two thirty-four South Main Street, tax map U four, lot seventy-two, R two zone, for the reasons. the reasons previously stated.
We have a second then.
I'll second it.
Discussion on the motion. All of the favored motions, sing five, say nine, raise right hand.
Aye.
Aye, closed. You withdrawing the equitable way. Thank you. Okay, now, we've still got that mess of our last meeting, we gotta get this solved.
Well, it probably doesn't really mean a lot now, because this, this was happened.
This superseded, yeah.
No, 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 I'm talking about the minutes of the.
The minutes?
Did you guys read this draft by Maynard?
Yeah.
Uh, February 27th, 2007 minutes, do you guys see any, any?
Read them and understand them, and you did good.
I, I went on through it, it looked pretty much in line.
You, the, I, I did write down all the motions and seconds on my, on my copy, so they are, I think they're pretty good. The only thing that, is you guys have the, any other addition you wanna go on your findings?
No, because we had.
That was the Rivermore condo association.
Oh, yeah, I totally remember that.
Yeah.
I remembered well.
I guess bottom line was the board followed up with their last consideration that the sign was grandfathered.
Right, basically, we, that was the motion where we voted against, against the rehearing, and the other one, it was just a continuation to tonight. And we did motion by Gid Lang by, to approve the December 5th minutes, and Richard Shelton, Gid Lang voting favor, Dana Glennon, and Leo Philino Sting, motion made by Richard Shelton to approve the minutes February 13th, all members voted favor of the motion, motion made by Shelton, seconded by Lang to adjourn. Okay, so basically, if you agree to this, we will give it to.
Yeah, it's all same label. As I can recollect, that's how it went.
Any controversial?
No, okay.
And we haven't, how long ago was that meeting? What was the date?
Month to the day, 27.
Yeah, February 27.
So we haven't received any appeal from the representatives for Rivermore. Is today 30 days?
27th.
What's today?
February 27th, 27th of March is 30 days.
No, no, no.
Yeah, but the 28 days in February.
28 days in February, they get two more days.
So it would be, it would start the day after the meeting for the 30 days.
Right.
So it would be today's Monday. If something isn't in by the end of the day, Wednesday.
It's four weeks from February 27th to March 27th.
Right, this is 28 days.
Four, yeah, 28.
So it is, they, okay, so basically, we've still got two, three days, but regardless, we're gonna, these are gonna be the minutes we're gonna have to live by.
Okay.
Okay.
And I haven't heard any inquiries. Usually if someone's gonna come in with an appeal, we've heard from them before now for some matter of fact.
I don't know, they, the last one, they waited till the 30th.
That's true, that's, yeah, four o'clock in the afternoon.
Do we want our variance notes, or do we keep these?
I think you can't, though, it's not.
Oh, boy, time and a half tonight.
Put them under your pillow, in case you have to go to Superior Court.
I don't know, we're gonna have to get something straightened out here, because we're gonna be, well, I'm gonna, I'm talking, I'm gonna go to the planning board at the next meeting and on the new business, I'm gonna bring up this, this shed business, the setback business, because it's, the last 20 years, no one's been paying any attention to it.
And everyone, everybody's backyard.
I know.
And what's really brought it to the attention is the fact of its structural stability. Then you get there, and you see that it's on the property line, and you look at the ordinance, says it can't be, so you're, you know you're in trouble.
I know, and, and you look at this, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna be hit with about 200 equitable waivers if we, if we start saying every.
The one, the woman that's gonna kill the dogs, herds is on the wall, herds is on the wall, and we let her keep it there.
Who's that?
The one in New Village, Maple, Maple Creek.
Oh.
She's gonna mourn Sean Cahill, the old house, gonna kill that dog.
I wasn't on the thing, man.
Yeah, he was gonna kill the dogs, and it's on the wall.
I know, I know. That's a neighbor dispute, you know, we get involved in neighbor disputes.
No, that's what I don't wanna get involved in. Okay.
Yeah, right now, they're speaking.
Second.
Third.
Third.
Third. You gonna take care of the guy?
Uh, down there in the cave, you're excused. Thank you.
He left an hour ago.
Can you flick the buttons up?